Okay. It is 10:00 a.m., so I'll call the Board of County Commissioners a meeting to order for March 29, 2023, and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Legions to be led by Commissioner Wes Rice.
If you'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to go into public comment now. I'd ask everyone that wishes to offer public comment, well, I'd ask everyone to please silence their electronic devices so that we don't have any interruptions in that regard. And when an individual approaches a podium, we ask you to sign your, print your name, and then state your name for the record, and your time will begin when you, after you state your name. So at this time, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. I would indicate that we have four commissioners present today. Commissioner Tarkanian is returning from out of country, and is, so he will not be with us today. And I think that's what I needed to say, right? So at this time, public, oh, I wanted to say that we only have one item on the agenda today for possible action, and so we will be going into those individual items. So we will provide public comment at the end of that presentation today, whatever time that ends. But we will not be taking any action by the board today. Is that right, Ms. Willoughby? No actions required today.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, that's correct. The action won't come at the end, which we expect to be either tomorrow or Friday.
Right, okay. So at this time, once again, public comment is now open. Is there anybody who wishes to offer public comment?
Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager, for the record. Good morning, Chairman Gardner, commissioners. I have my broadband hat on this morning, and I want to tell you about some public events that are happening on Monday. The state OSIT, Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology, with all of their broadband outreach and efforts, is required to do plans throughout the state to assess the availability of broadband and really get public input from people on, what's your service like? How reliable is it? Are you a senior? Do you understand how to use your devices, et cetera? So they are having listening tours all over the state during the month of April. We're, I think, their first stop next Monday, April 3rd, and so there'll be two different sessions. The first one is at the Douglas County Senior Center, and it is from 9:30 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon. So they'll have a table set up out front. As the seniors come in, they'll be able to speak with them, help understand their needs, what their desires are about Internet, and then they'll have a little presentation during the lunch, and they'll have a table, they'll be available there to talk to them. I have a flyer out front about that, and we are pushing that on social media. I'm expecting a press release about their whole listening tour from the state today. We'll be pushing that as well. And then later in the day, at the community center again, but in the south room, they'll be there from 4:00 to 6:00, and that's more kind of an open house, that same kind of format where they'll have a survey there for people to take, and they'll really have a dialogue about what people's concerns are. Do they have reliable access? Do they have affordable devices? Do they want more skills in the area of using the Internet? You know, are they aware about cybersecurity issues, different sites they should be going to? So anyway, wanted to share that these two events are happening on Monday, and it seems like we do an awful lot of planning in the area of broadband, but it is required to unlock those federal grants, which will then push more money for these types of activities to our area. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Ms. Granahan, do you mind, you don't mind taking a couple of questions from the commissioners?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. So have we, have we done a mapping of broadband throughout Douglas County? And if we have, do we, have we identified areas in our county that are, that do not have broadband cable laid, basically?
Most of our areas have some access to broadband, but the question is, you know, how fast is that speed? How usable is that? Is it, is it really unserved with these lower speeds? So we did some initial mapping, and then the, the state through the, through OSIT came in and was able to do a different layer of mapping, kind of at a higher level, so that's a real benefit. And then now the FCC has dropped in their maps of what they want to use when they roll out the grant funding. There are some differences between those maps, and so OSIT is going through those areas where FCC says they're served, and OSIT believes they're not served to the level they should be. They should be able to qualify for grant funding. So anyway, that dialogue is going on now between the state and the FCC. That was probably more than you wanted me to answer.
No, it's not more. It's actually, I still have some questions. Is it, so when you talk about speed, is it, is it the cable that generates that speed? Is it, is it the type of cable, or is it the provider that then delivers that speed? And are we involved as a provider, or as providers, basically, private enterprise, not public?
We do not want to be in the Internet business, so it is done by, some places are, but we don't, I don't think, anyway, not speaking for you. So, and it is really, it's kind of limited by the type of service that the provider can provide. So like you're saying, is it DSL? Is it, is it, you know, more like over cable? Is it over fiber, right? Because if you get over fiber, now you're picking up some really fast speeds. And so those services that are over, like DSL or other, and the county manager knows how well I don't speak this language, but, that are over different types of wires that are slower are going to offer slower speeds.
And I, and I'm sorry, I probably should have had this conversation privately with you to better understand exactly what it is. But, but when you talk broadband, you're talking about much more than just the actual fiber optic cable that is laid in the ground. You're talking about over the airwaves as well, and whatever, whatever is involved in getting Internet or phone service to, to our residents. Is that, is that an overall general statement?
Yeah, you can pretty much use the term Internet. You know, do you have access to the Internet in some way, shape, or form? And that's really the question that the state is going to be asking at these sessions on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
It's all right.
Once again, I probably should have asked those questions privately offline.
I've, I've learned lots. Happy to share.
Well, I'm still learning myself, so it's not an easy, it's not an easy process to wrap your head around, really. So anyways, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I feel your pain on that, wrapping your head around it.
Yep. Okay, so anyways, is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Since seeing none, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented today. Okay, motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, second by Commissioner Hales, to approve the proposed agenda as presented. Since seeing no discussion on that, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, and we'll go to the administrative agenda and go to item number one for presentation only, presentations by the county department directors on the operations of their respective departments, including departmental goals and objectives, achievements, benchmarks, and performance objectives being presented by our chief financial officer, Terry Willoughby. Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. We, again, have no departments that want to present today, but I'd like to talk about the process and how the departments were included in the budget process, if that's okay.
Absolutely, please.
So we start with a budget kickoff in January, I believe, that Jenny holds, and it's open to all of the directors. Everyone's invited. We have budget, budget contacts for fiscal people that may not be at the director level. Everyone's invited. We talk about the upcoming budget, some of the things we expect. Jenny goes through the budget process, and then departments are able to input their budgets for services and supplies and into our financial system. And again, this year, the target was, this is fiscal year 21, 22 actuels and 5% adjustment for inflation. That was the target for that this year. And then they are also provided the opportunity to submit supplemental requests. Jane divides this work among her staff so that everyone, each department has a contact to discuss things with during the budget process. And then from then, gets rolled up into, I mean, there's a lot of back and forth discussion with department heads and department contacts about submission of, particularly in the supplementals, getting clarification about what they really want, what, what those words mean that they've written on the paper, and getting a clear understanding so we can bring that forward to you. And I think part of that process is that the departments feel so comfortable with us, and we've had, Jenny's had that level of communication with them, that they don't feel like they have to come here and talk about it. We've put everything, we managed to get everything in writing, and we communicate very clearly. For example, I sent an email out to all the department heads on Monday advising them of the proposed schedule for budget hearings and inviting everybody, even if they weren't, didn't want to come give a presentation, to be here. And also, we communicated back yesterday after the board meeting, the results of yesterday's meeting, let them know that there's, you know, whose supplemental requests were approved, and why, which some things weren't going forward, but like, they're not a yes now, but we're going to fund them later. So we do keep in constant communication with all of the departments. Happy to answer any questions on the, on that process. It's a very collaborative process. It's come a long way, and we're always making improvements, so we are always open to input.
Commissioner Hales, I sense a question mark in your, in your mind?
Yeah. A question's per, a question's percolating.
Okay, maybe I can let it percolate a little bit more, and I'll, so one thing that, Ms. Willoughby, that I've been troubled with, I would say that, I think that's a proper word, is the involvement of the commissioners themselves, okay? And I, and I think I articulated this back in our budget process in 2021, when I was a brand-new commissioner at that time, is, is the feeling that there's a lack of involvement from the commissioners. I didn't, certainly I wasn't reached out to this year either, or last year, in regards to the ability of the commissioners to also have goals and objectives and, and visions of what would happen in our community. And so while I think we've, at times, I know I've expressed that to you, and I've expressed that to Patrick Cates, in regards to some goals or, or visions for our county, but independently, but I don't know that it's always or ever been, you know, it's, it's, for instance, the only way that I've really communicated, for instance, the need for a transportation process in South County is through Scott Morgan and community services. So I guess that's what, what I'm concerned is, is, and I would hope that maybe we would look at that in the future, is actually, when we go into that budget process in January, and you're reaching out to department heads in regards to that, perhaps we could have a method for the individual commissioners to also express some visions and goals and desires in regards to financing of, of different items within our community. So I appreciate your outreach to the department heads, and obviously, that's very important. And I realize also, and I should have probably prefaced this, I understand that the commissioners themselves, most of these funds are pretty well allocated on an annual basis, and, and so we, we still only might have pennies to move around, but we should, I just feel like we should be given the opportunity to move those pennies if we want to. So anyways, just, just an observation and a thought process.
Yeah, Terry Willoughby, for the record, we are kind of, I would say, wagging the tail with the objectives and even the departmental goals and objectives. You'll see a budget book that's coming forward as part of the final budget process that'll have that, but we should be bringing that forward in the beginning and getting your input as well. Having a strategic plan will certainly help with that process, but we can probably, I would, I'll look at our timeline, and it may be appropriate to just add you to that kickoff meeting, and then we could work with the county manager on a process for that. And I'd like to bring, I will have the budget kickoff presentation available, and I will bring that tomorrow, and we'll have it uploaded as supplemental material as well. It's really an internal document, but it would be good for you to see the whole process.
Thank you. The other, the, the, one other comment that I wanted to make is that a couple of years ago, and maybe it was just last year, I believe you went to the Good Governance Group and did a presentation on Budgeting 101 and how the whole process plays out in our county. I was very impressed with that, and I would encourage, I don't know that we did that this, this year, but I would encourage continuing to make those kind of forums available to the public so they can understand our process and going forward with it.
Sure, I'm always happy to talk about finance and budgeting, so, anybody that asks, I'm open to it.
Yep, I think they failed to ask this year, so I'll make sure that gets on their agenda. Ms., Commissioner Hales?
Thanks. I appreciate your comments, and I do think the strategic plan is important, and I've talked outside of meetings about, that's a real high priority for me, but now is my opportunity to say that's a very high priority for me, because that's how we set the direction. And if we're not setting the direction, then we're not doing our job. So I think that's important. I guess the question I want, I, when I read the agenda, being new here, maybe I get to do this, when I read the agenda, I saw presentations by county department directors on the operations of their departments, including their goals, objectives, achievements, benchmarks, performance. To me, that's, that's a good thing to have presented and to hear and to discuss and to say, okay, so it's a little bit of a piece of accountability. We have used the taxpayer dollars, and this is what we have achieved, in some, you know, because of course you could, that could go on three weeks, right? But no, just highlights, maybe, and I guess my input would be, I, I, I would have liked that. And I don't know if there's any other process during the year where we have them come and do that, but, but they could also take the opportunity to say the things I already read from the agenda, but also say, I've reviewed this budget, and it's in line with what I see from my department this year, and I, I would appreciate hearing that from them. So I guess there is no question there, other than a statement, observation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, so that is something I can work with the county manager on, maybe before final budget or during the final budget adoption. We can work on that process if that works. We had a plan at one point of, like, having departments rotate, like, four departments would present every year, and COVID kind of threw that off track, and so we just need to get back into that.
Thank you.
Yep, because we, I mean, an observation, a couple of weeks ago, we had the library come to us and just gave us a tremendous amount of information regarding what their, their goals were, their accomplishments. So that was, that was, it was time-consuming, but it was still very good information to have. So I concur with what Commissioner Hales is saying, you know, because our, our department heads do a great job, and the public needs to know that, what they're doing, because we are a service organization as the, as, as the governor says, there- we are a service organization, as the, as the governor says, you know, technically, the state government is a service organization, and we are a service organization as well. So what we're delivering to the public is important for them to, because sometimes, you know, I mean, you do things, and it just goes unrecognized, and then all you do is have the phone calls of, why aren't we doing this, and why aren't we doing that? Well, we are, but we're just not blowing our horns about it, you know, so anyways. Okay, thank you. Any other comments regarding item number one? If not, we'll go to item number two. Okay. So item number two for possible action, discussion to approve the fiscal year '23, '24 tentative budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentations by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following. General Fund, all departments, including supplemental requests, and I believe that we did that yesterday. Special revenue funds, including supplemental requests, debt service funds, enterprise funds, including supplemental requests, internal service funds, including supplemental requests, capital projects funds, including supplemental requests, redevelopment agency funds. This being presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Terry Willoughby, and our Finance Director, Jenny Cartwright. And before we start that, I would indicate that I think we're prepared as a board to go as far and deep as we need to today, to try to knock out as much as we possibly can. Is that, are we in concurrence there? Okay. So the rest of the day is yours. We'll take a break for lunch.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, a couple of follow-up items from yesterday's meeting. There was a request for a debt schedule. You have that at your dais. It's also been uploaded as supplementary material. And also, Lisa Granahan is here to ask, to answer any questions you had on the Tahoe Prosperity contract for supplemental requests from yesterday. So she's available.
I think I asked the question yesterday, do we know how many of the employees who work on the Nevada side of the South Shore actually live in California?
For the record, Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager. I did go back and listen to the video yesterday, so I saw the discussion, and I put together some information that I thought would be helpful. I did do my best to research the couple of questions that you asked. I was not able to put my finger on that exact number, but I will not give up, and I will persevere. I was not able to get ahold of Heidi Hildrum with the Tahoe Prosperity Center, or Shelby Cook, the programs manager, today, but I have a feeling they probably have that number. If not, I've been looking at other sources, like the data that W N D D has and GOED. GOED, I wasn't able to access the report today. But anyway, I will persevere on that one. And then you also asked a question about the amount of the Economic Vitality or Economic Development Budget that supports other partner agencies that do economic development-type work, or community development-type work. And so of the supplies and services total, which is 121,000 approximately, 90,000 of that goes to support other partner agencies. So that includes N N D A, the Northern Nevada Development Authority, W N D D, the Western Nevada Development District, 10 of that is Tahoe Prosperity Center. Main Street, Gardinerville is $10,000, and then $5,000 for the Nevada Small Business Development Center to help with support for business counseling and services. And Mr. Chairman, if you would permit me, I put together a little bit of information based on the questions I heard in the video that I thought would be beneficial. I'll keep it brief.
Sure, please.
Thank you so much. So just a little bit of background, you heard some of this, I think it was last month, when Heidi Hildrum was here speaking to you from the Tahoe Prosperity Center. So I think the year was 2010, and like, a comprehensive economic development strategy for the entire Tahoe Basin was being put together. It was called the Lake Tahoe Basin Prosperity Plan. And then there were things to be done, a whole laundry list of stuff that was a possibility to really help diversify the economy of the lake, the types of jobs, et cetera. And they needed an entity to help do that. And so the Tahoe Prosperity Center was formed, and all the counties around the lake become members, and we started supporting the T P C to the tune of about $10,000 at that time. Since then, the other jurisdictions who started at about that level are contributing more, at least $35,000, with Washoe contributing 50. I had the exact numbers, but I couldn't put my finger on that email this morning either, and I thought I had put it in the supplemental request, but I neglected, so apologies for that. This year, the things, and Heidi talked about this, and when she presented to you, but things that Tahoe Prosperity Center continues to work on for us, you know, that Alert Tahoe system is really important, and the number of wildfires that they catch every year because of that, right when they're starting to smoke, and get folks on that, and continuing to expand that ring. And then the work that they're doing in broadband, they really help us with getting information out. I've got business connections with the chambers, you know, et cetera, the Visitors Authority, but on the residential side, they really help me push with their social media sites information about upcoming things that we need to get the public dialed into. And then what I really find valuable is the work they are doing, bringing jurisdictions together at the lake. We do that virtually every month and have a conversation, and it's not just jurisdictions. Caltrans is there, NDOT is there, OSIT, the Office of Science, Technology, and Innovation at the lake, is on those calls as well, and it's an opportunity to really share and figure out where those missing connections are and how to address those. They do do work on the Tahoe data collection and indicators, because we are, you know, five different counties, four different counties around the lake and a city, gathering that information around the lake and figuring out progress, or where we're declining. That's important work. And then they have worked really hard on Envision Tahoe the last year. Commissioner Rice and I were part of that. It's kind of a Lake Tahoe Prosperity Plan 2.0, if you might. These are the updated strategies, the playbook. These are the things that need to be done and can be done, and as you had mentioned yesterday, Chairman Gardner, a lot of partners can step forward and make that happen. They do work on the South Shore Housing Action Plan, and that's primarily, and in fact, Eldorado has structured in their contract, work for them to work on that, because there really are opportunities on the California side. There's land, which we don't have much of, it is a little more affordable because of different situations, and that's not the case on the Nevada side. But, you know, we do have a lot of people who work in Nevada who live in California, and, you know, it's not just those people who need affordable housing. I was surprised interviewing, you know, a CEO from a business that we gave one of the business showcase awards to, when she wanted to buy a house, she couldn't afford it on the Nevada side, so she had to buy it on the California side. So it's that, there's a whole lot of people who are in that, you know, we would think a decent income that can't afford housing on this side. So however, we can support the efforts on the California side, where they have more grants available and more state support, you know, I think that that's important and benefits our South Shore as a whole. What I, and when we first started this with Tahoe Prosperity Center, you know, as I mentioned, the jurisdictions gave membership contributions, you know, we're kind of at that level still. But the other jurisdictions have gone to contracts with the T P C, Tahoe Prosperity Center, because they are giving more money, right, and they want to know what they're getting. So what I would propose, you know, that would, and this is, a lot of this is in the supplemental, that the contract would, the way it would be structured with them, because they'd want to go to a contract, is that we would put a big emphasis on this nurturing the entrepreneurial system that Heidi talked about last month, and that's the work being done with Tahoe Inc. That's the opportunity to get those entrepreneurs together, to get them talking, these small, small businesses, to see how they can get their questions answered, you know, have mentors, get connected to resources. You know, it's interesting, with the pandemic, there was an influx of entrepreneurs. We gained entrepreneurs up in the Tahoe Basin during the pandemic, and they haven't all left us. And it was interesting, I was listening to Mike Hasmiersky with EDON, that's kind of like the sister to N N D A. They do the, a lot of the work for Washoe and Sparks. Anyway, he was talking about the importance of the entrepreneurial ecosystem, and as we continue to look to diversify jobs, yeah, we can do it in the manufacturing sector, we're not going to do that up at Tahoe, right? I mean, we can't put manufacturing plants in at Tahoe with the land use and stuff. But those kind of ecosystems, he said, they exist in the Silicon Valley, but we have to grow them over here. And the fact that we have co-working spaces, we have Untethered, which is in Zephyr Cove, which is, you know, a sister to Cowork Tahoe. So we have a place for these entrepreneurs to meet, and then Heidi at the Tahoe Prosperity Center is in the process of bringing a program manager on, and I really shouldn't talk so long, but what she wants to do is really, a lot of the money that we would contribute would help to support the work of that program manager, who would be following up on those connections with the businesses, doing more marketing to attract more of those entrepreneurs, making sure that they were connected to resources, growing that whole piece of the pie. And then I would definitely want to continue the work that we're doing with the Alert Tahoe camera system. Anywhere we can continue to raise funds, not ours, but, you know, donations, to help deploy more cameras, I think is important. I think updating their annual, or their semi-annual economic indicators is important work as well. You know, in terms of housing, I don't think, as you've mentioned, that that's a real priority for us in Douglas County, just because we don't have a place to put it. If we can support the work that's going on at South Shore, I think that's good, but I don't think it needs, I think we're focusing on these entrepreneurs. We've got an opportunity there, and that's where I would structure the most of that. And with that, I will stop talking and be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Just want to make sure I understand this right. Would you suggest that we propose a contract this year?
Yes, definitely.
And that, okay. Good.
That's what Eldorado does. I have a copy of their contract, and, you know, I would, I would start there, and then I would modify it to meet those needs that I was just speaking of.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been privileged to be associated with the Prosperity Center as one of my committees that I'm assigned to, and I can tell you that the work they're doing is beneficial to the entire county. The, just, if nothing else, just the fire spotters with their cameras have probably saved acres and acres of timber on our side. And I think that the Prosperity Center is worth every penny that they're asking for, and I believe that we get all of that in return and more. And thank you, Lisa, thank you very much.
So let me, the questions I have, or the observations I have, first of all, there are members of our community, and that's why I really bring it forward, is because there are members of our community who are questioning our involvement and our return on investment. And I know that in the overall scheme of things, in the total amount of our budget, it's not a lot of money, okay? So I recognize that. What I'm concerned about is the Tahoe Prosperity Center's continuing to basically beat the drum, so to speak, for lack of a better term, this 777 strategy and the Envision Tahoe playbook. Members of our community have pointed this out, and the playbook requesting, and I just got an email today on this, the playbook is requesting 7 million from each local jurisdiction to support an annual $20 million shortfall, I guess, for the next 20 years in transportation. And so I guess my trouble here is that by contributing, you know, and we've been contributing 10, okay, not a lot of money, and I have no, you know, you, your department contributes to, and is member of, a lot of different organizations. So it's nothing about your budget, it's about what we're contributing to them, okay? So that's the difference, and I want to make sure that's very clear. We're not questioning you and your, and your, in your department. But for us to make an additional contribution indicates that we are basically in support and endorsing those principles and the playbook, and that, and I'm not sure that we're there yet. I'm not sure that we have bought into that as a Board of Commissioners, the five of us. We haven't really had that discussion. So that's why I'm questioning the increase from 10 to 30. That's a 300% increase, right? And so, and once again, it's, I realize it's only 10,000 to 30, but, you know, I don't know that, you know, I'm probably going to fall in the minority on this, I just, you know, those kind of things concern me, is the endorsement of ideas that we really haven't discussed, and whether or not we agree to as a board. So that's my only reservation here. Can I hear from the other commissioners in that regard?
I just want to note that I like the contract idea, and we could specifically say in there, our contribution does not in any way endorse the Tahoe playbook or future contributions toward transportation.
So we'll put the, so we leave it on the burner, but we put it on the back burner until we can get a little bit more clarification on what we're going to do. Is that what you're possibly suggesting, or, I mean, I don't want to be the ogre here, but...
I would put it in the budget, but have the understanding that we want a contract to go with the donation.
Commissioner Rice?
As I've said before, I am completely in favor of upping the ante by $20,000. I believe that this will be money well spent.
Are you, so I have a question for you. Are you endorsing the playbook and the 777 strategy and the additional transportation funds?
I am not.
Okay, well...
Because I support this organization does not mean that I buy into the, into the 777 package. It's something that's still under development, still being discussed. Personally, my wife has said that if I, excuse me, if I vote for any process, that would mean that she has to pay extra taxes to drive out of the driveway, I'd better think twice about coming home. So, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, but I am, there's been several suggestions that I have argued against. I am, I am a voice for Douglas County, I'm not a voice for TRPA, although I'm on it, on the governing board. I am not a voice for TTD, although I'm on their governing board also. And I believe in the future of public transportation. I'm just not sure how we're going to get there, but I am totally in favor of this package.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that we're all willing to go on the record in that regard, okay? Because I think that's important, that our, that our public understand that, and I hope by... I hope by, by this, by this message that you've gotten from us, Ms. Granahan, that you can understand the mixed feelings of this board and some of the reservations and some of the support, so.
Mr. Chairman, Lisa Granahan for the record. As your representative, I fully understand and respect your views when I'm sitting on the Tahoe Prosperity Center. And Vice Chairman Rice and I have adamantly shared with the Tahoe Prosperity Center and through the envisioned process that some of these transportation strategies are not bought into by Douglas County. But we were working on a basin-wide document. There's a lot of, it reflected community sentiment, and despite my red lines to the document, you know, they didn't succeed. But I, I think both Vice Chairman Rice and I have made it clear that that is not something that Douglas County supports. And again, we pick and choose what we want to do in the playbook. We don't have to do the whole enchilada. We do pieces that make sense for Douglas County.
Thank you for your understanding.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate your presentation, so.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess the consensus here is that we'll put it in the, in the budget, but look at an eventual contract that we can bring forward to us and look at, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yeah, and Terry Willoughby for the record. You'll see several instances where, and I'm going to say this probably every day, over and over, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we have to spend the money. So you're going to see contracts and things come back, and this is an example that I'm sure Ms. Granahan will bring back, a presentation and a contract with those terms. But you would have another opportunity weigh in on that when that comes forward.
Okay, moving right along.
We're moving along.
Thank you.
So today's schedule, we have finished with the general fund, which is heavy lifting, in my opinion. So today we will start with enterprise funds, tentative budgets, and the supplemental requests. Again, that's water, sewer, airport, internal service funds, risk, dental, and fleet. And then we'll talk about the capital project funds. The thing that all three of these funds have in common is they're very capital focused. So you'll see a lot of their expenses really come through the capital improvement program presentation later. So with that, I'm going to put my fund balance worksheet up. It's a summary.
Okay, so we're all on the same page. What, what tab are we going to in our notebooks here?
Jenny Cartwright for the record. Enterprise funds are on tab seven.
Seven, okay.
And for those following along online, that starts in today's special meeting agenda posting on page 19.
One nine?
Yes, one nine.
I don't have enough room.
I don't have enough paper, I'd need a bigger desk.
Me too.
Ms. Willoughby, your mic is off.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. There is a copy of the fund balance worksheet that Terry's displaying on the screen right now, and the, it should be in the front of tab seven of your binder. Packet page 68.
So the first fund would be the regional water fund. Has total resources of 1.5 million, 1,555,614. Total uses of resources, 1,536,901. So an operating surplus of 18,000, basically a balanced. And for these types of funds, it's not so important for them to be balanced. We still want to look at their operating revenue and operating, but they, because enterprise funds are built like business, the rates are designed to collect monies for future capital projects as well. So sometimes you will see revenues come in, and they're going to be spent in a future year. Because rate studies are ba, are based with a capital improvement plan that could be years and years long. So they have a capital piece and as well as the operating.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. Just a quick overview of what, of what this fund is. The regional water fund provides water to other water, water users, so it's not an individual sales of water to consumers, it's, it sells to three water entities in the area. And the main, there's actually not a lot of movement in the revenue and expenses in this fund between the base budget or fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '24, except I did want to point out, the revenue appears to be higher, but that is because we have the depreciation add-back, which is really a book entry. It's not actual cash coming in. So if you're just sort of perusing the changes, the revenue total says 375,000, adjustment from base, but there's a $378,000 depreciation add-back. We could go into the details, but just know that it's a book entry that might help. And then the cost of water in the services and supplies category has gone up about $93,000. And those are the major movements that we see in this fund.
Who, who are our users here? There are no users, so this is a sales to other entities?
Phil Ricker's on Zoom, and I'm sure he could, if we could, Phil, can you answer?
He probably asked this question earlier.
Yeah. Jenny Cartwright for the record. While we're reading for Phil, Carol and Sheffo and I can remember two of them, so it's Carson City and Indian Hills. I couldn't remember the third one, so, oh, is it?
So this is not, this is not our public water system. This is what, who we are selling water to.
Correct.
Carson City and Indian Hills are two of those entities.
Yes.
Are there, and are there others?
And I think it's the town of Mendon.
And the town of Mendon?
Yeah.
We will find out and get that for you. It is a wholesale water fund, not a retail water.
Now, we have some, if I'm not mistaken, we have some contractual obligations there. Is that long-term contractual obligations to, at least to Carson City, and I know that we do?
Terry Willoughby, these are all governed by contract.
Any other questions, commissioners? No? Okay, I guess we can move on to that.
The next fund is the sewer fund, and has resources of 3,122,763. Uses of 2,19,641 for a net of surplus, 1,103,122. And this is another one where you will see a capital component in the, that will be added through the approved projects in the capital improvement plan.
And Jenny Cartwright for the record, just to go over some major or significant changes that we're seeing within the sewer fund. Again, we have the book entry for depreciation add-back of 1.1 million, so that's not an actual dollar amount of cash that we're going to collect for this year, but we have that accounting entry. And then on the expense side, there's a removal of a one-time, or, excuse me, of the discharge expense for the topsy lift station that's no longer occurring, so there's about a $138,000 reduction in services and supplies for that. And if you wanted to follow along, that one is on page nine of 33, right in the middle of the page. That's sewer service, Indian Hills, GID slash Carson City. And then in the middle of page 10, maintenance and repair costs are going up by about 130,000. We will see that fairly consistently throughout enterprise funds, just in general, maintenance and repairs is something that we've seen increasing. But in this case, there's a $100,000 emergency repair contract with Summit. That would be if necessary. So that's also something we'll see throughout enterprise funds, is they do have contracts in place for emergency repairs only if needed.
And Mr. Ricker has his hand raised, so we couldn't let him in.
So is Mr. Ricker on yet?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ricker, I know I asked this question, I've asked it the two previous years, so I don't think I should not ask it this year again, is, so our North Valley Sewer System Treatment Plant, I know that we've been under construction or renovation in a number of areas on that particular system for a couple of years, and in that process, we were contracting with Carson City to do some of that, receive some of that waste and also, and treat it, with the anticipation of moving that eventually to our system and, and doing away with that contract. I thought that was the process. Are we there yet, or what, what's, where are we on this?
Yeah, Phil Ricker, Director of Public Works for the record. Very good question, Commissioner Carter, and the answer, the short answer is yes, we are there. The North Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant was completed and commissioned. We've been operating that plant now for, I think, at least the last year. And, and a project this past summer was to transfer the flow from, or create a connection from the North Valley Commercial District up there, the Target Walmart, the Target Walmart area, connection back down to the North Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant. That was completed and is operational, so flow to, flow from that region to Carson City has, has terminated. So we're no longer sending, sending that flow for processing by them, it's being processed by us. There is one caveat, and that is we do have, we still do have a contract with Carson City. It's based on the Clear Creek residential development, so it's purely the residential area of the Clear Creek. That's a, the, we maintain the sewer system within the Clear Creek development, but the outflow from that is into a Carson City sewer main that runs down Old Clear Creek Road and into their system, and there's no, at least current possibility to interconnect those or to take that flow. That flow is still contracted with Carson City. Matter of fact, the residents up there actually pay Carson City for treatment, that treatment capacity.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. Do we have, do we have a financial impact that that is going to have for us in regards to not continuing to send that, the treatment to Carson City?
Yeah, I think it's in the, it's in the financials. I believe we've reduced that, there is a cost in there, I'm trying to remember which line item it is, and Jenny, you know, but it's, I think we've reduced it by about $150,000 in terms of outside cost that is being paid to Carson City.
Was that, okay, so I'm not sure I'm understanding that. Is that, is that in regards to the contract with, in regards to Clear Creek, or is that by, by reducing and changing that flow into our plant? Is there a cost savings there from Carson City to us? That's, I guess that's what I was asking.
Yeah, we're, we, we've estimated that we will realize a savings of around $140,000 annually, and that is in line item, that's on page 23, line item, there's sewer service, Indian Hills, GID, Carson City. So that total cost, which was around 165,000, will go down to around 26,000 annually. So the remainder is, is some sewer service between, for the portion.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions in regards? Okay, I guess we're good with the sewer utility?
Okay, the next fund would be Douglas County Water Utility Fund, and this does have residential customers. The total resources are 7,5,951. Total uses, 4,201,166. And again, you will see additional costs come through the capital improvement program when that's presented. That's why there's a surplus to create that room for capital projects.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. Major changes that we see in this fund are approximately $340,000 increase in water user fees on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the sewer charges, which are listed in the middle of page 17 of 33, we did experience an increase in rates from Tahoe-Douglas District for the sewer charges, so there's about a $96,000 increase in expenses there. And then on page 18 of 33, maintenance and repair, as previously mentioned, those increases, those costs are increasing. In this case, there's 325,000 built in for emergency contracts. So again, those would be only if needed. And then the major repair and maintenance at the bottom of page 18 has about a $74,000 increase due to some movement in expectations of what's going to be needed in the upcoming fiscal year in that line item.
So if I'm reading this right, then the actual for 2022, you're talking about 73,000 increase over the 22 actual amount to the anticipated amount of 191. Just making sure, under 193, just want to make sure we're on the same page, you're looking at the same numbers.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. So the adjustments from base are actually a 5% increase over the fiscal year '22 amount. So we took the fiscal year '22 actuals and added a 5% increase. That gives us the base budget, so then the adjustment you're seeing is on top of that 5%. So 73,914.76 was added over and above FY '22 plus 5%.
The same number, so, okay.
Has resources of 1,92,409, uses of 898,859, for an operating surplus of 193,000. Has resources of $1,092,409, uses of 898,859, for an operating surplus of $193,550.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. In the Airport Fund, we also see the depreciation add-back book entry on the revenue side, and no really significant changes in the expenditures to really speak of. I would point out, though, that there is, excuse me, some changes in miscellaneous revenue because we don't have an airshow scheduled for the upcoming fiscal year, whereas we did have one in fiscal year '23, we didn't have one in fiscal year '22.
As I'm looking at the bottom line here on the Airport Enterprise Fund, on the last page, 27 of 33, the 23 adopted budget revenue was less than our expenses by a little over half a million dollars. Am I reading that right?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, yes, that was the way that last year's budget was adopted. However, the capital improvement program would have been incorporated in, to the expenditures at that point, final budget adoption. So there would have been capital projects built into that $17,352,000 number, which we don't have, for comparison purposes, we don't have the capital projects built into the fiscal year '24 proposed tentative budget at this point in time.
Is there anything, let me ask this question, is there anything in these pages that indicates what our revenue from the airshow was and our expenses for the airshow were?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, there's nothing on this page that shows the actual revenues for the airshow. You can see the adopted budget for the airshow on page 23 of 33, under Special Events, which is about two-thirds of the way down page 23, of $315,000. The actual revenue was slightly higher than that. I believe the final number was 340.
Terry Willoughby for the record, I think it would be best if we brought back actual year-to-date totals as supplemental material tomorrow. I also see Bobby Thompson has her hand raised, so I'd be happy if you wanted to have that discussion with her, but I can provide that information tomorrow, because it really, I think the last little bit of it came in probably just last month, so it would be completed as of that date. So we can provide that tomorrow on a supplemental material, that's a great question.
Yes, please. I mean, I'm seeing here that we had a 23 adopted budget of Special Events, $315,000. I assume that's for the, is that for the airshow then?
Terry Willoughby, that would be for the airshow, however, they did bring in revenue over their anticipated budget because we had a budget augmentation on the last board meeting. So I will bring that actual information back to the board.
Okay.
I'd like to hear what Bobby Thompson has.
Yes, thank you very much. The net revenues from the airshow were just at $50,000 after all the bills were paid, so we did have a net revenue on that. The other item that I think's important, when you look at that expenditure of $898,000, please remember that $831,000 of that was to completely redo Airport Road from Hayborn East, as well as the airport parking lot. So most of that was in one project.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, that's good. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Then move on, okay. And that's it on the.
One thing I did want to bring to the board is, we have a document called. Sorry, you have a document on your dais called Working Capital Targets for Enterprise Funds. We don't really look at fund balance for enterprise funds because they have capital assets in them, like, we can't spend water lines, we can't shoot debt for water lines or infrastructure. So working capital is defined as the difference between current and non-current assets and liabilities, distinguishes. And so working capital typically is the relatively liquid portion, so cash, things that could be used primarily. And we will, bringing back policies, it's best to identify the triggers in each fund. Each fund is very different as far as stability and rate structure, strength of collection processes, practices, consumption of inventories and prepaid. So each enterprise fund should really be taken on its own, you can't do a one-size-fits-all policy, but that is something you would expect to see during the next fiscal year.
Okay, so, so we're done with that particular area, but we need to go into the supplementals on the enterprise funds, is that right? Okay.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the supplemental section for enterprise funds begins on, well, there's a green separator tab in your binder, a green separator page in the middle of tab seven. For those following online, it is Agenda, the Special Budget Meeting Agenda Packet, page 47. You also have an 11 by 17 version of the schedule of supplemental requests that was handed out yesterday, just to make it more readable, but it is in your binder in smaller format And again, there's a summary at the beginning of the supplemental section on page one of six for the requests that were, that made it into the supplemental section versus base budget. I'll give everyone a second to get there. And that's on your flesh chart, I'll bring it up. Sure, we can do that. So the first request is on page two of six. Is everybody at that point? It's in today's agenda.
Tended budget?
Yeah.
Any questions regarding item number one, I guess it is, right, on that request?
Yes.
Which is the work truck for wastewater operations manager, questions?
Yes. So I apologize if everyone else already knows this. The wastewater operations manager, that's not the stormwater.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, correct, they are two different things.
Very different things. So this has to do entirely with this enterprise fund.
Yes, that's correct. This is in the Sewer Utility Fund and is specific to sewer activities.
And I guess the question also, this has nothing to do with the, basically, the 1.8 million that we identified in the general fund is, right? I just, I think that's important for the public to understand, so this is not having impacts on that.
These, because they're in enterprise, they're funded strictly out of those particular funds, like wastewater would be out of the sewer fund.
Totally separate bucket, right? Yes, you, okay.
I guess my other question is, do you, do you recommend approving these?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I thought they were very thoughtful in all of the supplemental requests, and you'll note that in the IRC review, I would recommend approval of all of them. I thought they didn't, I thought they were all justified and well-written.
In that case, do we want to go through each one individually, or just? Maybe have a, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've looked at all of these individually, and I believe, at least in my opinion, having a little bit of experience with wastewater and sewage and affluent, there's a difference, by the way, and they all appear to be in line to me.
So, just to add a little levity here, I'll preface that, okay? So we do not have currently a diesel-driven pump, okay, versus an electric pump, I mean, A little levity, a little levity, no answer required. So all we hear about is green energy, so I just thought I'd add a little levity in Okay, so we're done with that, we can move on to the next section, is that? Commissioners? Okay, let's move on.
Jenny Cartwright for the record.
Maybe, maybe this would be a good time to maybe take a 10-minute break before we go into the next section? Okay, let's take it, let's, it's my, it's 11:12 by my computer, why don't we return at, well, 11:13 now? If I sit here long enough, it'll be 11:20, but why don't we take a break until 11:20? Okay, seven minutes, I think? Okay, thank you.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Okay, yes, okay, so where's Mr. Walt? Okay. We're going to take a couple, a couple more minutes, okay? We'll return at 11:25.
Internal Service Funds, including risk management, self-insured dental, and our motor pool vehicle maintenance.
And which tab is that, Ms. Willoughby?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, Internal Service Funds is on Tab 8, and it is Page 54 of the special budget meeting agenda for today for those following online.
And can you give us an overview of what risk management is, and then we can go into this?
Terry Willoughby for the record, this collects rates for workers' comp, workers' compensation, unemployment, and liability insurance are all paid out of this fund. So it's an internal service fund because departments pay into that. Like, for example, workers' compensation is collected through payroll. There's a rate based on the type of employee you are that is charged through payroll and goes back to the risk management fund as revenue. And that's why, same thing for unemployment. And then all of our liability insurance claims are also paid through there.
Now, is this, this is a self-funded fund, we don't, in other words, we don't have contracts with anybody?
Terry Willoughby for the record, we do. The board approved a contract for our liability insurance last year. We used to be with Nevada Pool, we are no longer a part of the pool. Workers' comp, we are self-funded as of 2018. And unemployment is just unemployment. We pay the claims as they occur, which is self-funded, correct?
Okay.
So risk management has total resources of 3.9 million and total uses of 4.3 million. Again, this is something we will be looking at, the workers' compensation, because we've been, we now have enough history of being self-funded to develop a really good rate structure. So you'll be seeing that come through at some point.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, just to talk about some significant changes within this fund in the upcoming fiscal year. Prior to fiscal year '23, we were allocating the admin and overhead costs, or I guess collecting the admin and overhead costs entirely in the general fund. However, some of those recouped expenses were related to risk management. So we are now properly allocating those collections from other funds into the risk management fund. So you'll notice the revenue of $639,197 in the middle of Page 2 of 14 for the admin and overhead interfund contribution. That's a collection from all the other funds of overhead costs related to operations of risk management cost pool. So there's corresponding expense items in other funds for risk management cost allocation overhead that you'll see throughout the budget. In addition, we're seeing the liability premiums increase. So we have about $188,000 in liability premium increases. Those are listed on, at the bottom of Page 3 of 14 and the top of Page 4 of 14. And I would point out that since this is a self-funded, since risk management charges other funds, as their costs increase, so in turn does their revenue from other funds. Because they don't have a self, a revenue source within this fund, all the other funds within the county pay into this fund for whatever their related costs are. So as our liability premiums increase that we have to pay to that contracted vendor, so in turn does the charges to the other departments. I would note also that on Page 4 of 14, the non-covered claims expense item near the top has increased 449,000 almost. That is actually an accrual, that's not something that we plan to write checks for this year. I don't know if you recall, recently we bought a resolution to increase the budget for fiscal year '23, so the current year, to make sure that we had enough budgetary authority to make that book entry at the end of this fiscal year. Likewise, we're increasing that amount for next fiscal year so that hopefully we won't have to come back and ask for that resolution to increase it. It'll just be built into the adopted budget.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, if I could expand on that a little bit. We are recording the projection of future costs for current claims to be fiscally sound and to make sure that we are recording the proper liability. So that we have an actuarial study that is, provides a number for what they, they do their actuarial voodoo of, to determine what they incurred but not received amount of those claims. So we are booking that full liability each year.
Okay, on Page 4 of 14, we have a strategic planning expense there listed, $35,000. Can we get some insight into that? That's the county manager's expense?
Terry, I can.
Go ahead.
Terry Willoughby for the record, we typically do budget some amount for the strategic planning effort, and that would, of course, depend on the cost to bring a consultant in and to work county-wise. It's why it's just a central service function.
I guess my question is, is that related to the oversight and review of the strategic plan and what we're planning on looking at that?
That's correct.
Okay, 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 so we're planning that into this next year's budget, okay? And the, the training to remain current in trends, that's kind of vague. Oh, can you give us a little insight into that? What are the current trends?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this is one of the descriptions that we ask the departments to provide when they're making adjustments based budget. So there is a little bit more detail in the very bottom line of Page 4 of 14 under that current trends line. So it says that training has been delayed due to COVID and that they're essentially restoring their training budget back to pre-COVID levels in order to keep staff abreast of current changes and things that are going on that affect the workplace and particularly in risk management arena.
And Terry Willoughby, that would include like safety training that, so that the risk management's HR, human resources staff would be able to train departments and make sure that we're current on all those requirements as well.
Okay, I guess the questions we're going to get out of the public on that particular item is whether or not we're providing training to our employees regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion.
And CRT.
And CRT, and SCL, and whatever other alphabet soup you want to use, but.
Terry Willoughby for the record.
They're kind of, I'm sure they're going to say, you know, we don't want to spend money to, to train our employees in that regard, so.
Terry Willoughby for the record, because this fund is the risk management fund, they'll be trained on topics appropriate to risk management, like safety training, how calculating liabilities, working on worker comp. Workers' comp is a very complicated issue, and so a lot of that training would be provided to staff so they're current on current legislation that affects workers' comp claims.
Very narrow, right? So, yes, thank you, okay. I'm just, you know, I mean, when the public sees these things, they come back to us and say, what is this all about? So we appreciate the explanation so that we have a better answer. Any other questions, Commissioners? Feel free to jump in, guys, when you have questions, okay? Please continue.
The next fund is our self-insured dental fund. It's dental, again, this is charged through departments. Employees select certain coverages. That money is remitted through payroll and then sent back to this fund as revenue, and then the premiums are paid out of this fund. You'll see basically the revenues, which would be contributions from other departments, 407-551, and the expected expenses are 407-139. It's designed primarily to be a pass-through account. Some premiums are collected and then claims are paid.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, there are no really significant changes to mention in this fund. Dental claims have, are budgeted to go up a little under $19,000, but that's a $394,000 line item. So that's really the only significant change to mention here.
And we do, Ms. Lang does work with our brokers to review actual expenses to make sure that our rates are staying current for employees and employer contributions. So the next, the last Internal Service Fund is our fleet and vehicle maintenance fund. It's exactly what it sounds. We have a central vehicle maintenance and replacement shop. They handle most of the vehicle replacements in the county so that we can put them in the vehicle, in the fleet system. And departments are charged for repairs as well as we build up a reserve for replacement of current vehicles. So that when the time comes when a vehicle needs replacing, then the fleet services fund already has a reserve available for that.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this fund being internally, internal service does collect fees from other funds. So as fees in this, or costs in this fund increase, so therefore does its revenue and its corresponding charges to other funds. So they have approximately $257,000 increase in revenue budgeted for the upcoming year. And then I would point out at the top of Page 11 of 14, we have a line item for motor vehicle replacements. In the previous several fiscal years, that's been running, you know, in the $200,000 to $400,000 range. This year, we are only scheduled to replace two vehicles. This is primarily because in 2008, with the economic downturn, we didn't buy vehicles that year. And so those on the replacement cycle have sort of cycled into creating this dip in replacement needs in the current fiscal year. There's also a corresponding capital outlay offset item right below that that is causing sort of an offset of changes. That offset is a book entry. And then really in general, costs are going up within this fund slightly. There's not really any major line items to speak of other than the central services cost allocation has increased by about $44,000. And that's on a cycle. So it doesn't necessarily correspond to what's happening this year. It's a look-back charge based on activities in previous fiscal years.
Does this fund include police vehicles?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, no, those are budgeted in the sheriff's department. So they have a line item. I don't know if you noticed in the general fund, there was one capital outlay line item for, I think it was $380,000, but don't quote me on that. That was for the purchase of the sheriff's vehicles in the general fund, not in motor pool.
I was, that was just for everybody else's knowledge. I kind of, kind of have a good handle on that one.
Sometimes we ask questions we know the answers to, but it needs to be articulated to the public, so. Yep, back on Page 11 of 14, replacement reserve constable vehicles to general fund? I'm not sure I understand that process. That's 313821, right in the middle of the page.
Okay, Carolyn Cheffo, Senior Accountant. During the current, current year, the sheriff's department took over the constables. And prior to that, the constable vehicles were motor pool vehicles. And so we are transferring those vehicles out of the motor pool and into the sheriff's department. And those, you know, part of our process with the motor pool is that we collect money to replace the vehicles as they age. And so we're transferring the amount of the, the net amount of the remaining reserves in the motor pool that we had collected for a replacement. We're transferring those to the general fund for the sheriffs when they need to replace those vehicles.
Okay, that makes sense, so, thank you. And of course, one light item that our public is going to be very interested in seeing is the, the cost for tires for the year. I mean, okay, well, I mean, it's an important item, right? You know, maybe if we had been paying attention, not we, present company excluded here. I don't think anybody, well, maybe Mr. Ritchie was involved in it. But, but, you know, $81,739 sounds a lot more appropriate than $1 million for tires that don't go on vehicles in our county. So we appreciate your paying attention to that, so.
Yeah, and that's part of the.
But I, but, but down below there then, and I asked this question a couple of years ago in regards to, I believe it was the clerk treasurer's office, clothing non-uniform, okay? I know it's only $74, but can you kind of give me an idea what that is?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, I would have to talk to the motor pool department and see what that purchase is related to. I can get back to you.
Yep, I think it was maybe $25 or $75 a couple of years ago when I, on a different, on a different area, but anyways, okay.
Terry Willoughby for the record, so sometimes these are, so some departments have shirts that they wear that aren't considered uniforms, but they may have like a shirt that. but they may have like a shirt that they purchased for employees to wear. I know the Clerk Treasurer's Office has done that. Other departments do it. Finance doesn't.
Yeah, I know, for instance, the Clerk Treasurer's Office provides shirts, sometimes election worker shirts to, to volunteers. And that, you know, so I'm sure that that's probably where we're coming, but coming back to on this item as well. But not, not real critical, okay? So I just happened to notice it. Any other observations? Okay, we, we're done with that particular area? So where, where are we? What's the next item? How long is it going to take? And should we take a lunch break now, or should we, or should we power through the next section and then take a lunch break?
Yeah, so we would move forward with the debt service funds and the redevelopment agency funds, which won't take very long, but this might be a good time for a break. And then we will dive into the special revenue funds and start on those and finish them tomorrow.
Okay, so you're suggesting we go through those other two little ones now, the RDA, and, or wait until after lunch?
No, we could do it now.
Okay, let's do that. What section of the binder are we on now?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, this is tab six in your binder and supplemental material for today's meeting, page 206.
Okay. You ready?
The county has one debt service fund. This was for all the governmental fund, oh, sorry. The county has one debt service fund, Fund 541. This is for all the county's general governmental debt. So as we talked about yesterday, governmental funds do not budget the entire amount, they don't record the entire amount of the debt. So you will see the resources here are shown as transfers in. These are transfers from other funds like the general fund and other governmental funds that may have, be covering debt service. And these would be the debt service payments. And those, be happy to answer any questions. You do have the debt schedule that was provided to you this morning.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
One observation.
Well.
You notice on, on the debt service bonds, there is nothing that says Event Center. There's still a lot of people out there, a lot of people out there that still think that the county is paying for that, which is not correct.
Terry will be for the record, we will move on to the capital project funds. We didn't do capital.
Tab number five? Is that right? Tab number five?
We will cover the redevelopment funds and then I think we should break for lunch. We'll bring capital project funds and then move on to special revenue in the afternoon. My recommendation will, will move on to the redevelopment funds. We'll finish that. Then I would recommend a lunch break and we will, after lunch, we will handle capital project funds and then start on special revenue.
Good idea. Okay. What, what tab are we going to go to then?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, we are on tab nine, so all the way at the end of your binder. And supplemental material, page 212. So the redevelopment area two budget starts on page two of three of your worksheet. It's a short section. RDA two collects incremental taxes and then distributes them to the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. So really, this is almost net zero. There is some investment earnings that are causing an excess of revenue over expenditures. But generally, we're collecting that property tax increment and distributing it. And then any excess is returned to the property tax entities in the portion that they would be entitled to receive their regular property taxes.
Right, okay. So by resolution, the board is committed, the redevelopment agency is committed to $1.3 million of property tax revenue, new property tax revenue generated in the previously assigned redevelopment area, geographical area, to the Event Center, 1.3. Anything in excess of 1.3 on an annual basis would then be distributed to the various ad valorem entities that are listed on a property tax bill for that particular area, which is the Oliver Park GID, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have reached that threshold this, we reached that threshold this year. And we anticipate, of course, as they build out additional items, we will, from now on, probably, reach that threshold. And so we'll have funds that will be then distributed, wherever those amounts are, to the different ad valorem entities within that area.
Yes.
And we have, I believe that resolution was, what, 25 years? So we still have about 22 years on that. This last year, this 2022, in 2022, we didn't add, we didn't actually reach that 1.3 threshold. But we will achieve that in '23, and we certainly anticipate doing that in '24, right?
Yeah, Terry will be for the record, and we'll bring back copies of the actual agreement tomorrow, for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, as far as the redevelopment capital projects fund goes, we do not have capital projects built into the budget yet, so there is nothing appearing in that last page three of three, expense-wise.
Okay, let's, if we don't, if you don't mind, now, this is redevelopment area two. Redevelopment area one, also, I don't see anything here. But I believe we have exhausted, is that, no, we've exhausted those funds? No, we haven't exhausted those funds, but those are committed funds to the, the expansion of Vista Grande, right? And so with the expansion of Vista Grande, or the connection between Jack's Valley Road and the current section of Vista Grande, now that we have the easements identified, those funds are basically dedicated to that, and that exhausts that fund, is that right?
That's the only thing left for RDA one, is to complete Vista Grande. And it's been delayed because of the easements. And now we have the easements, so I expect that she'll go out to bid and go forward.
Very good. Okay. Any other comments, questions, observations? Okay. So does that complete the actions of RDA?
Yes.
So now you're suggesting we go to lunch. Okay, we'll do that. So I show 11:51. We're going to give ourselves an extra 10 minutes, nine minutes. So we'll come back at 1 o'clock, okay? You want to join us for lunch today? You want to join us for lunch today?
Recording in progress.
Okay, it is one o'clock so we will return to the uh from recess of the Okay, it is one o'clock, so we'll return to the, uh, from recess of the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, as I noted earlier in the minutes, uh, we have four commissioners who are in person and, uh, Commissioner Turkinian is, uh, traveling today, so is not going to be able to be, uh, a part of this today and expecting him to be here for tomorrow when we hopefully conclude this thing. So, am I being overly optimistic, Ms. Willoughby?
Yeah.
Anyways, okay, um, so, okay, so, uh, where are we? What, what tab are we on? Where are we going?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, um, if you don't mind, I would clarify a few items from this morning, and then we can move on to the Capital Projects Funds, which will be on Tab Five. So just, I'm gonna make sure it's okay. Um, so a few clarifications. So, Fund Three Twenty Four, Regional Water Customers, um, are actually Carson City, Indian Hills, and Fund Three Twenty Eight, which is our own water service to residential customers. Um, where Minden comes in is that that fund, um, purchases wholesale water from Minden as well. So, water's going all over the place. Um, the non-uniform budget that was questioned was for high-visibility sweatshirts in fiscal year twenty-two and winter coats in fiscal year twenty-one. And then I did also want to clarify, um, as far as the adjustments from base that are in the workbook, um, I misspoke. It is a comparison of the fiscal year twenty-two actuals to the fiscal year twenty-four budget net change. So not five percent over. I don't know if you need me to explain that. So, when the question had come up about what the difference was in the budget worksheets, um, comparing adjustments from base budget, I had responded to that question saying that we took fiscal year twenty-two, added five percent, then compared that to the fiscal year twenty-four budget. That is not what this report reflects. It is the net difference between fiscal year twenty-two actual spending and fiscal year twenty-four budget. Just wanted to make sure we got that cleared away. And then, um, just kind of a preview for the upcoming, um, funds that we're looking at and for the overall budget that we're looking at, uh, I, I haven't specifically been addressing salaries and benefits changes because we have an FTE presentation tomorrow. And, uh, the comparison between fiscal year twenty-two actuals and fiscal year twenty-four budget doesn't really give you the picture of approved positions that are changing. Because fiscal year twenty-two actuals is based on who is in that position and how much they made. And so if we had vacancies, you don't have an actual spend in that fiscal year twenty-two actual number, although that position may have been budgeted and vacant at the time. So we'll cover that more tomorrow, but I just wanted to highlight, I haven't been talking about that as we go through the funds, because it'll, it'll be covered tomorrow.
As you're going through those explanations, which are appreciated, um, the, the, the question is, uh, so April, May, and June, so we have ninety days left in this fiscal year, approximately, um, after this week. Um, how, what's the feeling out of finance in regards to, um, our, uh, we have the twenty-two actual amount of expenditures and income, and how are we doing? How do you anticipate, or, or what is the, what is the anticipation in regards to what is budgeted in twenty-three and that budget twenty-two, twenty-three, and the actuals? Are we, are you comfortable with that? I mean, where are we on that?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, yes, um, we are seeing some increases, like vehicles. Vehicles, the dealers are kind of increasing the costs, and we've been able to cover that primarily with budget transfers. Um, I expect to see salary savings that will roll into fund balance in most funds. Most, most departments have vacancies right now.
Okay, um, but we are, we've already talked about the motor pool and the fact that it doesn't look like in twenty-four we're gonna have to replace many whatsoever, right? So, so that's good, although the, and the opposite side of that coin is that, uh, as we're going up and down Carson Street and Carson City, uh, those dealers are filling up with vehicles again, and so their inventory has really, really increased over the last ninety days, which meant if we had delayed maybe some of those purchases, we could have gotten them at a little bit less price. I don't know, but, yeah.
So, Terry Willoughby, for the record, the problem has been that we have not been able to get vehicles for the most part. So there is a backlog of approved purchases, even from this year's budget, that have not happened yet. So hopefully that will, those will still be within the price range. It's, some of the dealers refuse to hold to the state contract pricing, which is not good.
Okay.
But... So the next group of funds is a Capital Project Fund, and a Capital Project Fund is a governmental fund used for tracking financial resources used to acquire or construct major capital assets. Another governmental fund, not an enterprise fund, modified accrual, and these collect resources to, again, construct major capital projects. So the first one is the Extraordinary Maintenance Fund. This is what we spoke about yesterday, um, a new fund that was just approved this fiscal year, or reinstated. It's always been there, but we refunded it, and there's three point five million dollars in that fund that will be available for, um, replacement of capital projects and maintenance on existing capital projects. And there's nothing currently budgeted. We would like to bring a plan, work with facilities, and bring a plan back to the board later in the year.
So, Ms. Willoughby, we created two new funds, uh, a month ago, so, um, two funds, uh, and I don't, I, I can't recall how much money we put into those. Do you-
So this fund is, this number would be, this number was put in, the three point five, and then the Economic Contingency Fund that we spoke about yesterday that could be used for, in the case of a declared emergency, or any time there's a health and, um, human safety issue, that would be a million dollars. And that is not listed on here as a budgeted fund, I believe.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So the extraordinary fund is, is a million dollars?
Now, this fund, you can see it right here, extraordinary maintenance.
Yes. I'm sorry, I-
Oh, hold on. That's why I'm pointing-
What page are we on here?
There we go. Okay, here's extraordinary maintenance right here. So this is the three point five million.
Can you give me a page in our, our binder?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, um, it should be at the beginning of Tab Five. You have a fund balance worksheet. Pull out your magnifying glasses and it should be visible.
The number we're referring, million, uh, where is that?
Yeah, I'm looking at Fund Four Oh Five.
And Terry Willoughby, there's nothing, we're not asking for any budget for this fund. That's why you don't see a detailed sheet. We would be working, because it's so new, we want to develop a plan of strategic expenditures, depending on what the need is, and urgency, and bring that plan back to the board later after the budget process. I don't know what our facilities' needs are, and we are currently without a facilities' manager.
Okay, so you were delivering information that we just didn't necessarily have on page.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the fund balance that Terry's indicating here of three point five million is in your packet in the Capital Projects Fund Balance Worksheet, um, in, in your binder, uh, front of Section Five.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
But there's no individual Fund Four Zero One worksheet. There's no budget worksheet for it. It's just listed in, as part of the fund balance worksheet, which is also, um, the entire fund balance worksheet is also, I believe, on Tab Two, Tab Two of your binder. Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the online version is on Page Sixty-eight of Sixty-eight in the Special Budget Meeting Agenda Packet. Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the online version is on Page Sixty-eight of Sixty-eight in the Special Budget Meeting Agenda Packet.
And that's also, so, that's also where we can see on, on the second page of that tab, on Tab Two, we can see the questions we had in regards to RDA One.
Terry, yes, that's correct. This is a summary.
Yep, okay.
So that you can see easily at a glance the revenues, the resources and uses of funds, and what the fund balances are that we're projecting for each fund. So the next fund is the Ad Valorem Capital Projects Fund, which is Fund Four Oh Five. Monies are set aside, there's a special property tax that's assessed, that can only be used for purchase of capital assets, including land, improvements to land, and major items of equipment, renovation of existing governmental assets, repayment of medium-term obligation debt, and part of this ad valorem is received and then passed through to each town as well.
Funds. Um, could we, uh, articulate a little bit on, uh, Fund, uh, in regards to the residential construction tax? Maybe you can give us a little bit of, uh, an insight into that process.
Correct. Um, these are fees charged to developers that are specifically outlined in county code for development of parks within certain areas. They're collected and segregated on each area of the county where they fall, and the money is used, has to be used in the same area that the funds were collected, so whatever. And these funds are under the purview of community services. They control these monies. We'd like a development impact fee.
So I, you know, as a, sitting on that board of the Parks and Recreations Commission, we've seen these funds, um, and, uh, they, not only, yeah, they have to be, there's four identified areas that they must be spent in, based on the construction taxes within those, those communities. Um, the discussions we've had, um, or that I've had with our elected officials at the state level, the State Senator Titus and Assemblyman Gray, is the fact that these fees, I believe, are set in NRS. Are they not? I don't think it's county code. I think it's NRS that directs how much we're allowed to collect from a developer in regards to per-home basis. Um, Mr. Ritchie, could you answer that, or do you know anything about that? Regional transport, uh, regional construction tax, or residential construction tax, um, we charge, I believe it's a thousand dollars per home in that, of new construction in that, for the development of parks and recreational facilities within that area. Um, the problem that I have seen, uh, sitting on the Parks and Recreations Commission, is the fact that, um, I believe the, uh, code or the NRS says something about a thousand dollars or one percent of, up to one percent or a thousand dollars. Obviously, a thousand dollars a home, uh, trying to develop a park these days, uh, does not come close to the, the actual cost of trying to, you know, just playground equipment itself has become extremely expensive, so, and then the purchase of land, of course, to do that, or land that's set aside. So anyways, uh, I've been talking with our state legislators, legislators about, uh, amending that to, to ensure that there's enough funds there, rather than just that one thousand dollar cap, you know, to, uh, to bring additional funds into that fund for the development of, of, you know, um, those, that's basically parks, okay? And, and so whether or not we have enough money really to do anything in regards to parks in that regard is, is minimal.
Doug, it's in Chapter Three Point Two Five of County Code.
That's NRS Code?
County, county.
That we could amend our county code in that regard and increase that fee, because I understood that was controlled by NRS.
I'm not, I, that's a legal question, and-
Yeah. That's why I, that's why I turned my left here over Mr. Gates' head. Yeah, I think that's something we need to research. We don't necessarily need an answer to that right now. It's just something to look at in the future.
I think it's a great topic for Mr. Morgan, who will be presenting tomorrow, so he'll be here to answer. I won't let him know. He usually watches, so he'll know to address that question.
And that's not just, that's not just to our county, if it's in NRS. That's, that's our surrounding counties as well. And I know I've talked to commissioners in Lyon County who express the same frustrations as that, is that, you know, a thousand per home does, really doesn't get you there. Now, grant you, that's not the, that doesn't, that, obviously that gets piled on the homeowner, right, or the home buyer, rather than the, than the developer themselves, but-
That's correct. It's just a question.
Okay, so we have something here? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. The tax can be imposed pursuant to Two Seventy-Eight Points, NRS, Two Seventy-Eight Point Seven One Oh, and it, there's a graduating scale, um, on or after July- On or after July 1st, 2020, the fee must not exceed $1,000. Our code was adopted...
I'm sorry, what was that year? 2028?
In 2020.
2020, okay.
The maximum fee that could be charged is $1,000. It doesn't go up from there. It escalated from 500, beginning in July 1st, 2003, at 500, and then it escalated over the years to the max, which is now 1,000. The county code, as CFO will be indicated, allows a $500 fee. That's in Douglas County Code 3.250.040, and that was enacted in 1997. So the board could increase that fee if it wished.
What's the feeling? I mean, I'm inclined to suggest that we get a code revision on that one, and back. I mean, 500's nothing, and 1,000's nothing, but, you know, but at least we could get the 1,000 instead of the 500.
I think I'd want to hear, I'd want to discuss it. It's worth discussing. Hear from the public.
I can work with Director Morgan to bring back, we could jointly do a presentation on that.
That's something we can certainly discuss, and Lord knows that the citizens of Douglas County like imposing taxes. That could be spirited debate.
Well, they may like imposing, they may like seeing growth pay for itself, though.
Well, it's a user fee, it's not a tax, okay? I understand, we call it a construction tax, but that's, it's a user fee, really. It's a, it's a, it's a tax placed on the builder, on the developer, not on our residents. And it's optional, it's not something that's forceful, you know, they have an option to buy in on that. But, for instance, we're dedicating, I believe, about $100,000 to pickleball courts at our community center. Now, there's a cost involved in that, you know, and I know that in your particular district, Commissioner Rice, there's a desire to have pickleball courts at the Kail Center that are not currently existing, and somehow they're going to, the county is going to have to pay for that. So it's only right that the developers contribute to the recreation of our residents. So, so that, there is a difference between a fee and a tax, and I see this more as a fee, not a tax.
I didn't say I suppose, I just said it's going to get interesting.
Oh, yes, we'll have the developers lining up outside the door, but I think we can get equal amount of pickleball court, desired people also to have an equal jousting match, so to speak. So anyways, just something to take a look at, guys, that's all I guess I'm suggesting here, because, I mean, we, right now, in the Lake area, we have 29,000 according to this budget, and pickleball courts are a lot more expensive than that. So, just an observation.
Chair?
Yes?
Thank you. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. I would like to clarify, what I was talking about was the residential construction tax for transportation. The residential construction tax for parks is another section of code, and that is $1,000.
It is already.
It is $1,000.
Okay.
So there's various residential construction taxes that the county imposes.
Okay. And that's what I thought. I thought that was regulated by NRS, and if we're, and if it's $1,000 regulated by NRS, and we're already at $1,000, then we're at the max, so we don't need a new ordinance to do that. So once again, the action that needs to take place, in my mind, is going back to the, back to the state legislature, right, and having them raise that, because... Yeah, right. Right. But, you know, I mean, and that, that's all counties, is it not, Mr. Ritchie? So, I mean, Clark County should be able to get on top of that, because they have a lot of construction going on, and whether or not they have enough money themselves to create recreational facilities for their residents. So anyways, just something that I observed several months ago, and I thought I'd, you know, mention it here, because that fund is very limited right now, so. Sorry for the interruption.
So the next fund would be county construction. This is like the capital side of the general fund, primarily funded by transfers out from the general fund. We transferred money in here at the beginning, was it this year? Last year, for, it's the beginning of last year's, this current year's budget, for the judicial center building project, and because we had a surplus in the general fund. So it's transferred from the general fund into this county construction fund, and then spent there. So it's like an arm of the general fund.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. This is also the fund where currently the gaming revenue, the $300,000 gaming revenue, is budgeted, and the corresponding expenditures for gaming technology and gaming maintenance, based on the approval of this board to move that gaming revenue. When we bring back the final budget, those amounts will be in the general fund, so the revenue and corresponding expenditures will be appearing in the general fund rather than in Fund 410 from fiscal year '24 forward.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Are you still digesting? Mr. Walt? No? Okay.
The next fund, we talked about park residential construction tax, and again, with all these, you will see a component of these that are going to come back with the capital improvement program. So you're not seeing, they don't have much operating expenses, they don't have a lot of personnel usually coming out of these funds, so you will see the majority of the expenses in the capital improvement program. The next fund is the regional transportation. This is under, or RTC fund, this is really under the purview of the RTC committee, is it a committee, commission?
And there we're on Page 9 of 12, that section, okay.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. I would point out that there is $700,000 in planned major repair and maintenance that is in this tentative budget. Other items may be added through the capital improvement program. And that was on Page 11 of 12, in the middle.
I think we talked about this last year. I'm looking at Page 10 of 12, under Services and Supplies, Advertising. I think we talked about that last year, and wondering whether or not, why we're spending money on advertising in that regard.
They have to file public notices for bids and for projects.
Okay. That probably got answered last year, and I forgot, so. But we're not anticipating any of that in '24?
Jenny Cartwright for the record. Often those come in conjunction with the capital improvement program as projects are identified, or absorbed with other spending within services and supplies categories, or line items, excuse me.
Everybody good? Commissioner Knowles, hey? No, you're not good, or no, you're not, you don't have any questions? Thank you, okay.
That completes the capital projects funds, so we will move on to the special revenue funds.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. Special revenue funds begin, they're in Tab 4 of the binder, and also in the supplemental material for today's meeting, starting on Page 27.
And we will be covering the special revenue funds, except for room tax, China Spring, and the library, which will be brought forward tomorrow, there are, and then that will be the end.
You just said the magic word, the end. Magic two words.
I know we're not...
So we're anticipating that we will be done tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
So the first fund is the Nevada Cooperative Extension. This is the, performed by employees that are actual employees of University of Nevada, Reno. They provide all the programs through the extension. Total resources of 352, 991, and expenditures of, total uses of 316,428.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. I would point out that you do have a Fund 201 budget worksheet on Page 2 of 118, and there's no planned expenditure specifically for that. We can include it in the fund balance worksheet for the final budget, but it's that $1 million that was allocated that's been discussed multiple times. So it's in, there is a budget worksheet for that on Page 2, but starting on Page 3, the UNR Cooperative Extension, the significant change within this budget is a projected 8% increase in professional services because of a corresponding increase that's currently proposed for UNR employees. The employees in this fund moved to being UNR employees that we contract for their services at the Cooperative Extension. That happened last year, and so we wanted to build in enough increase in the contract to cover any potential pay increases UNR is anticipating. And just one more thing. There is a small amount of salaries and benefits in this fund due to the use of on-call services that are provided through Human Resources, they are county employees, but they're used on an on-call basis to fill in for vacancies or times when the office can't be staffed by those UNR contracted employees.
Next fund is solid waste management. Fund 211, right here. You can see current resources of 782,000, total uses of 568,000.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. I would point out, there is, on Page 9 of 118 at the bottom, there is a one-time expense or increase in refuse anticipated in fiscal year '24 related to the Tamarack fire cleanup.
I don't understand what this solid waste management does.
It's a franchise with Douglas Disposal, correct? So this fee, it's a franchise agreement with Douglas Disposal that we receive some funding for, and there's only certain things it can be used for.
Sorry. Carolyn Cheffo, Senior Accountant. I don't know all the specifics of it, but we do have an agreement with Douglas Disposal for franchise fees, and they, because they, we own the transfer station that they lease from us, and also there's a portion of it that some funds are set aside to monitor the dump itself that is closed, and for potential cleanup needs and things like that, so.
So, under this joint powers agreement for water tests, federal and state water tests, can you, do you have information on that? What exactly are we doing? What is our contract? What waters are they testing? What are they testing for? Where do we get that information?
We'll get that information and bring it tomorrow. We'll give a complete...
Okay.
Carolyn Cheffo. I believe they do, because of the closed landfill, they do testing in all the local, the nearby... Yes? To make sure the aquifers aren't getting, like, leaching from the landfill, so.
I think it's important that we do that. I'm just questioning, I don't know that we've ever seen that actual report from them as a board to know where our aquifer sits in regards to quality. I would imagine this is for quality. So, have we seen that before?
I don't think they're done every year. I think they do them periodically, so I don't know if you would have seen one or not.
Well, I, so, yes, I've only been on the board for two years and a few months, but I haven't seen one yet that I'm aware of. Have you, and you've been on a lot longer than I have, Commissioner Rice, of using one? I'd like to see, I'd just like to see that report. I think it's important for our residents to know what the heck is in our water, and whether or not we have quality water, so. Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. This testing is pursuant to a closed landfill, so the reports go to NDEP. They're not a test of the waters for our water system, if you're talking about the solid waste management fee, if that's what you're talking about.
It says right here, state-federal water tests. That's why I'm asking, you know, do we have that incorrectly identified, or, you know, what water are we testing, I guess? And you're saying it's a closed system?
Well, there's, we do tests for NDEP for our closed landfill. Public Works also does required testing for our water treatment facilities, and those reports are also sent to NDEP regularly. And if the board ever wants to see a current report of our, of the county's water treatment facilities, you can always request that, and they'll be happy to provide it. They have to test frequently for the county-operated water treatment facilities.
For the water treatment facilities, not, this isn't, this has nothing to do with the aquifer, then?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, that was, what I was trying to drill down to, is exactly what this is. Okay. Never mind.
The next fund, Fund 212, is landscape maintenance districts. These are, they're, it's a special assessment district in the Monterra subdivision for landscape maintenance, and they're collected, and then Park's staff does the landscape maintenance in that area, and so their time is charged to this fund.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. There was a one-time assessment in fiscal year '22 that you'll see being removed on Page 11. in fiscal year '22 that you'll see being removed on Page 12 of 118 from the major repair and maintenance. That was just a one-time expense. So, we're back to our normal level of operations at around $20,000 for fiscal year '24.
At this amount, it doesn't warrant much time, but I'm curious how one neighborhood--
Terry Willoughby, you will see some variances in that fund, particularly because that and senior services, because many of the programs were shut down during COVID. So, you will see some large swings, because we're more back to normal for '23, '24 than we have been.
Which is certainly good, so, for our community, yeah.
Law Library, I'm sorry, PALS sales taxes here is, would be next, Fund 220. Again, the sales tax comes in, and we send it off to three funds, based on resolution that was approved by the board in a prior year.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, I will point out that Fund 218 is included in your packet-- excuse me, on Page 29 of 118, but it has no revenue or expenses budgeted in fiscal year '24, so, we will actually be removing that for the final budget presentation. It doesn't need a budget, so in case you were turning pages and not following along. So, Fund 220 is on Page 30. And as Ms. Willoughby mentioned, this is a pass-through of revenues to the Parks, Library, and Senior Services. So, any increase in revenue is offset by an increase in the transfers out.
The next fund would be the Law Library Fund. $18,985 in resources and $10,153 in current operations. And the Law Library is now housed at the library as part of, and is under their control.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, one change to point out is the decrease in the central services cost allocation. As I mentioned before, that is looking back at services that have historically been used, so, it doesn't reflect the level of activity in fiscal year '24. It reflects what we've already experienced, and how much we want to bring back to the general fund to recoup those costs of central services. So, it's decreasing almost $2,900.
Do we, do we, is this a good time to ask, does anyone, who uses that? And I think we're required to have it, right?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Yes, the county is required to have one. It was formerly in the second floor of the JLEC, and then they moved it over to the south wing of the library. It has its own funding source. I don't know what else to say.
She was just wondering, even though we're required, are we seeing any activity there, right?
I'm just curious, because--
I guess it doesn't matter, right? Because we're required to have it, but--
Yeah, I mean, so much legal research now you do on your computer, so who uses it?
I used to see people using it on the third floor, but that's because I was over there all the time. I assume, we could ask the library director. I know when I assisted the library board in moving it over to the library with Amy Dodson, and at that time, a lot of it was going online, and we were going to pay for, like, Westlaw, that kind of online research, because really, people don't use the stacks, the books anymore. But you can, it's fully functional. You could do legal research from the library, but you don't have print copies, really. As far as, your question as to usage, I know Amy was going to have a login so they could keep track of people who are using it. I don't know if that actually happened.
Thanks.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, the next fund would be the Library Fund. This was relatively new. We used to be part of the Room Tax Fund, and we separated it into its own, said it separated its operations into its own fund, like, three years ago, so that it could be tracked separately, and we'll be presenting that tomorrow. And I will find out about the Law Library, but how many, they know, how many people are using it.
That's all right, you don't need to, I can go find out.
Well, I'm always curious, like, some of these small funds that I don't really, not a whole lot happens during the year on some of these funds, and you're like, hmm. And some jurisdictions do not have separate funds for all of these items. They're just housed in their general fund. So, the next fund would be road operating. Total resources of $1,471,733. Uses $29,007, oh, I'm sorry, $2,012,989. And this is for maintenance of roads, and there's property tax, gas tax that are part of this fund, that are restricted for use for certain things.
I, I'm sorry, but I need to go back to the library for just a second, if you don't mind, because we're out of balance there. We have more expenses than revenue--
Correct.
Of $40,000, so-- Now, they're going to make a presentation tomorrow, you say, or?
I will-- He has not clarified whether it's going to be an actual presentation, but we will be, I will be walking you through the budget for the library. I have some questions. They also have supplemental requests, but as you can see, they're already have expenditures over their revenues.
Right, and now, I see, for instance, even the travel budget is, you know, when you go onto Page 33 of 118, you know, their travel budget last year in this budgeted year, 2023, is $1,000, and now, they're looking at $99, basically $10,000, so. You know, that's-- I just want to make, you know, I think it's important that these types of functions, you know, balance.
And we are seeing globally across the county where training and travel increased, because there wasn't any in the base year, because we were, nobody went anywhere during COVID, because any place that was doing training was doing virtual training, and so, you don't see the travel. But a lot of places are going back to in-person training, which most people find more valuable.
Well, and then you look at their advertising budget. Went from zero this year to $27,000 next year, you know?
So--
You know, I'm very, I've been very, you know, as I indicated earlier, you know, a month ago, when we had that report from the library, it was extremely impressive, but, you know, at the same point in time, I got to look at these other expenses that they're looking to, you know, increase, so that's just something for us to take a look at, is what I'm thinking.
And again, with their supplemental requests, if the board was to approve any supplemental requests, it would have to be funded by the general fund. The general fund transfer would have to increase, so, but we'll talk about that tomorrow. And the library board does hear his budget, and so, this is what they have approved. So, there's another step between their submission and before it gets to you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're in road operating, is that where we're at?
Correct. And you can see this current, they are using fund balance. This is one of those funds that has a capital component as well as operating, so they, if they have available money in their fund balance, they are able to use it. And part of this would be, I believe, additional repairs anticipated because of damage to roads because of the snow this year.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, just some significant changes. There's some increases in room tax and gas tax collections, and then also, as Ms. Willoughby mentioned, the snow removal. There is an increase in, at the bottom of Page 40, in the maintenance of traffic light line item, because they have an agreement with Carson City Public Works not to exceed $100,000. So, that's one that may or may not be used, but we want to budget appropriately for that contracted amount. Some changes to the cost allocation, risk management, $12,000, and central services, almost $5,000. And those are the major items I wanted to point out.
So, one thing I wanted to share with my fellow commissioners and the public is this gasoline tax. At our National Association of Counties Convention back in July in Denver, Colorado, we listened to the federal government give us a great presentation on green energy and green transportation. And at the end of that 45-minute presentation, I finally had an opportunity to ask a question, and the federal presenter started to take, finally take questions, and so, I took the opportunity to go to the microphone. And what I asked him was, as the federal government and the state of Nevada move to green energy, that's going to deplete our road tax funds, certainly in the gasoline tax funds that we use at a county level to maintain and repair our roads. And so, I didn't see any answer out of the federal government or the state government on the replacement of those funds, and of course, their answer was, we haven't addressed that yet. Well, thank you very much, but, you know, the problem is, is here at the, here at the county level, we have, we get those constant phone calls of potholes in the road that we don't have the funds to repair on a regular basis, yet the federal government and the state government keep moving us to that green energy, which is extremely distressing, because they're not identifying any method of replacing those funds that then we have to take the wrath of our local constituents in that regard. So, and, you know, in both of these funds, from the '22 to the '23, '23 budget to the '24 budget, we're actually seeing a little bit of a decrease in all three of those funds, so, you know, just something to keep an eye on, folks, right?
Yeah.
I hope I'm advocating in the right way on behalf of the county when I, when I have those conversations.
And Terry Willoughby, for the record, there, some other states are looking at changes to the gasoline tax methodology to go to, which, there's a lot of different options, and so, they are researching, because it's affecting most states who have hybrid vehicles. Some states more than others.
Sorry to interrupt you, I just had to get on my soapbox there for a minute.
That's all right. Now, talking about soapboxes, I've noticed that now, when you register your car, you have to put your mileage down, and I can see that one coming down the pike. So, we will not only be paying gasoline taxes, but we will be paying a mileage tax. That's something that we really need to take a look at. Or should I say, worry about.
Any other operations regarding the road operating fund?
Chair, if I may? Jenny Cartwright, for the record, I did just want to point out that the fiscal year '22 actuals were low because we didn't receive a payment until after the end of the fiscal year, so that's an artificial comparison, thinking that it might have decreased.
I still wanted to pontificate on that a little bit. Room tax now?
Our room tax will be covered by Director Morgan tomorrow. So, we can move. The next one would be the Library Gift Fund, which is all donations, and they only spend what they bring in, in donations. The next fund after that would be Tahoe Douglas Transportation District.
Wait, 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 let's get to that other, what page were you on previously? Does this room tax as a--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And I believe under NRS, we actually have, this is under the purview of the Friends of the Library and the Library Director. It's an odd statute regarding the gift fund.
So, we're not, we really don't see a whole lot there, but hopefully, as this organization's get rebuilt, hopefully, we're going to see a lot more in that.
Terry Willoughby, it's really restricted funds, again, so we don't budget for this. As donations come in, they choose how to expend them.
So, we're now into Fund 236, Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, is that right?
Yes. Terry Willoughby, total current resources of $1.5 million. Total uses of $207,600. There are capital projects, and there are supplemental requests that we'll be discussing later for this fund.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, there is an increase in the room tax revenues in this fund, which is significant to note.
Is that just from increased occupancy?
Jenny Cartwright, yes. There's no increase to the rate of room tax, that's the increase in expected occupancy.
Recovered from COVID, probably, I guess.
It's funny, that room tax fund really, like, they still had a lot of tourism on the Nevada side, because people couldn't, California was very shut down, so our tourism really boomed during COVID and has continued to keep going.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cates?
I just want to clarify for the record. It is, it is also a factor that the price of rooms increased. So, while our tax rate didn't increase, the average price of rooms increased quite a bit, and that also is driving that number higher.
But we're seeing, we're budgeting for a better than a 10% increase in room taxes from VAE. But we're seeing, we're budgeting for better than a 10% increase in room taxes from VHRs.
I would also add that with our new VHR regulations and used contractors, our collections of room tax from VHRs has increased. Even though we have less VHRs than we had a couple of years ago, our collection rate and keeping them compliant is a lot better.
We're not, room tax penalties, we're not, and, so we're not anticipating any room tax penalties there from VHRs.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, we didn't budget for those. You'll notice in the current fiscal year '23, we also didn't budget for those penalties. They are not the major revenue source for room taxes and are unpredictable as to what we expect. So it's not a line item budget in Fund 236.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, when we first started with HDL, who's our contractor for room tax collections, we had a lot of penalties because they were collecting a lot of past due accounts. And that has, they've gotten kind of caught up. And so you're not going to see the volume that we had before.
I also think that we did not want to use those penalty fees incoming as revenue to that program either, right? We didn't want to budget on the anticipated penalties in overcoming fixed costs of the program either.
Well, there's two pieces. The VHR enforcement program, which is in the general fund, and it's funded by the permits and those fines, which is, that's absolutely true. And here as well, we don't, you don't, it's not a stable source of revenue, so we don't want to budget for it.
So just to make sure I understand this right, there would be some capital projects that would compete for this money as well as the microtransit.
Terry Willoughby, that's correct.
And we'll hear about those, we'll hear about a supplemental request today.
Correct.
But capital projects we'll consider another day.
That's correct. So the two pieces go together. Some of these funds don't have any capital. Room tax always has capital, and, as well as this fund and typically Road Operating Fund, may have some.
Okay. And so I, when would we expect to learn about the capital projects?
I would say mid-April is the target right now.
Mid-April? Okay. Thanks.
And the next fund is the Justice Court Administrative Assessments. This is all restricted funds. These are from court fines and, that are designated for specific purposes and can't be used for other things. So when they take the fines in, they know what, the courts know what those purposes of those fines are. And we bring these back as a supplemental for restricted funds later in the year.
Blackjack fees?
There are so many fees and fines that go into here.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear the question, first of all. So, I'm sorry. What was the question?
If there's a question on a specific fine, I'll defer it to the courts and bring the answer back.
I was just curious what blackjack fees are.
I believe Mr. Ritchie could provide that answer. I can look for it. I actually.
That's a curiosity more than an actual need to know.
I'm shooting, I'm asking the courts. I remember it wasn't what I, it has nothing to do with blackjack.
Doug Ritchie for the record, it's from Blackjack Bonding. It's a case from 2015. And I can't remember, I remember, I had the same question. It's a weird fee that the courts have authorized, and I can't remember what it is. But it's not like blackjack, like the gaming. It's, has to do with bell bonds.
Fortunately, I'm not familiar with that personally.
And then, yeah, and it's listed throughout this document, blackjack fees, restricted use blackjack fees.
There was a case, Blackjack Bonding versus Las Vegas Municipal Court, in December, and the ruling was, there's a lot of, I'll print the information out. But it authorized a special fee, that the courts, it's a filing fee that is, for certain cases, that is designated for certain uses. And I'll provide that case information tomorrow. It is interesting, actually.
Moving on?
I can cover China Spring Youth Camp. I will direct the board's attention to the fact that they currently, under the tentative budget, there is a deficit of 634,000. Ms. Garrison and I will be meeting next week. We're going to develop a final budget that will be balanced or closer to being balanced. There's some, the state restored funding, the governor restored funding to China Spring. However, they restored it to the static level received at, in fiscal year '21, '22, which, we're in '23, '24. So there's no inflationary escalator to that number. And so we have to deal with the hand we've been given, and so we need to do some work on that budget. And Ms. Garrison was not provided enough time to react before today's meeting. It was an oversight on my part. I noticed that there was such a large deficit. And so we will be working together to complete, to bring this back to the board as a balanced budget. But just know that it's not balanced right now. So it will be balanced for final, or closer to. As you can see, she only has beginning fund balance of 958,000. So we can't use 600,000 of fund balance in one year. It'll be better.
Stormwater?
Okay, the next fund is stormwater. Again, this is funded through a transfer from the general fund. This transfer in is their source of revenue. And they're, so they have total resources of 1,121,000, uses of 1,160,000, small use of fund balance projected for next fiscal year.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, since we're skipping a section, I want to point out we're on page 80 of 118 for the Stormwater Fund. It's funded by the transfer in from the general fund. And significant changes from last year's budget really boil down to an increase on page 84 of 118 for major repair and maintenance, near the top of the page. That's for storm damage repair. And then I would also point out the decrease, or I guess comparison to the base budget, of the transfers out on that same page 84, close to the bottom. There's a negative $401,250 comparison to the base budget because we transferred money out of this fund in fiscal year '22 to shore up some projects that were being done in Fund 246 as part of the settlement agreement in the Johnson Lane area with multiple detention basin projects. So that 401,000 was a one-time transfer from Fund 245 into Fund 246, which is a settlement fund. So that's no longer happening in fiscal year '24.
So I guess my question here would be, we've had some infrastructural damage due to this latest storm that came through. Those identified issues will not necessarily be handled through stormwater. Is that the Storm Division?
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. We would be expecting to submit claims to FEMA for those because they're storm-related. They're part of the damage assessments that have been identified.
So that would, that would basically involve not only stormwater, but our road maintenance and other infrastructural cross-sections of our budget process here.
Terry, that's correct. Yes, so we would be filing, and then we would allocate the monies received from FEMA to the funds that are, have those expenditures. We're tracking everything in a centralized project. So we have, even though they're expended, the expenses may occur in the Stormwater Fund, they're recorded as part of the winter storm number three event. And we have Ms. Williams on the phone, on Zoom. Bobby, are you there?
I am here, yes. I just was receiving your email, and I saw, I may be able to, I'm not quite sure what the question was about blackjack, but I'm happy to give you the background and where it is in Douglas County and what it's all about, if you'd like.
Sure. It's not related to blackjack. We figured that out. But if you could get a little brief overview of what those fees are, how they're collected, and what the genesis of the name is?
Sure. So whereas in Blackjack Bonding versus City of Las Vegas Court, the Supreme Court of the State of Nevada declared that various courts in this state have the inherent judicial power to charge and collect reasonable fees in addition to the fees that are imposed or allowed. The Tahoe Justice Court and the East Fork Justice Court have entered into a letter of understanding, which is attached in the administrative order that was filed with Douglas County on February 2, 2015, allowing the justice courts to impose certain fees. They're also, these fees are delineated out in this order. So for continuances or waivers of initial arraignments, or for recalling bench warrants, or, there's different fees that they have that they can charge these fees that, for costs that are associated. And then they are paid to the courts. They are used specifically for what, for needs of the courts. And so that is a, it's a restricted fund. And in the order that was filed, it has those also listed out. There is a letter of understanding that was recorded on February 3 as well, 2015, between Douglas County and the courts for the validity of those fees imposed. And then there was the, yeah. So that's what the fees are about. That's a brief overview.
I think that's great. Thank you, Bobby, for calling back.
I appreciate you letting me talk.
I will. Thank you for responding so promptly. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Now you, so now you know about blackjack fees. It's great.
TMI, right?
Careful what you ask for, yes.
But appreciated, Bobby. Comment.
I have a question on stormwater. So professional fees of 263,000 are professional services on page 83 at the top, 83 of 118 at the top. I'm just wondering, is that like for engineering?
Terry, yes, that's correct. For engineering, for various contracts, for the projects that she's, that are still in the works.
And certainly over the years, the Tamarack Fire, and we're still, and actually, we experienced issues this season, this weather season, because of the Tamarack Fire. And the lack of foliage and trees in the foot, you know, that has caused us to experience a more catastrophic damage to our infrastructure because of this latest storm. So I think we're probably going to feel the effects of that storm or that fire for a long time in the county, especially in South County. So can't say enough good things about our stormwater division. What was interesting also is that during this most recent emergency, we had a presentation, I believe, by our stormwater manager, Courtney Walker, approximately a year ago, maybe, in regards to the effects that stormwater would create in the Smalter Creek Ruins Roth area. And then we found out that the, the actual event that occurred was extremely close to the actual anticipated damage or flow of the water in that process. So that was an interesting thing to look at. So once again, thank you, Courtney Walker and your stormwater team.
The next fund is the flood litigation settlement. We talked, we talked about this yesterday, where there is no more activity other than finishing out the settlement agreement and those projects. So, nothing else budgeted this year. The next fund is 911 Emergency Services, resources of 2.2, total uses of 2.3. This is actually a planned use of fund balance. They had accumulated a fund balance over the years. And so we're, it's a planned drawdown of that fund balance.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, significant changes in this fund are an increase in ad valorem or property taxes. ad valorem or property taxes. And also, this fund recoups some of its costs from neighboring entities that share in the use of its services. So Alpine County and East Fork Fire will be paying slightly more in fiscal year 24 than they were charged in fiscal year 22 for those costs. There are significant personnel vacancies. I know I promised I wouldn't talk about it, but this one's significant. So there's vacancies here that we'll cover in tomorrow's FTE presentation, but significant variances in expenditures from fiscal year 22, actual to fiscal year 24, budgeted or explained by those. And then there's a change for the risk management cost allocation, which is at the bottom of page 92. And then we did have, at the bottom of page 95, they did move some software costs from Fund 255 into Fund 256, which is the 911 surcharge. The department indicated that it was more appropriate that Fund 256 be charged for that software. So that's a $42,872 reduction in this fund, and we'll see the corresponding increase in the next fund.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said. So page 89 of 118 shows salaries and wages in '22 were $780,000, but the proposed budget is 1,340,000, 1,340,000? So am I, do I understand right that you are allocating that much because there are a number of vacancies that we all hope will be filled?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, yes, that is absolutely correct.
Okay. Thanks. We've gotten some interest in that, and I want to be super clear for the public that that's, money is there.
Terry, for the record, we budgeted for the full positions for the full year, and I believe recruitments are going well at this point because of the enhanced efforts by human resources. So we expect to be fully staffed.
You said we're going to get into the FTEs in regards to this, but just as a precursor to that, how many positions do we have and how many are we still looking for? Are we close to fulfilling our requirements there?
Terry, we don't have that information. We, so when we talk about positions, County Manager probably does.
For the record, Patrick Kates, I would have to double-check with personnel, but my recollection is we have people in the queue for all of our vacancies that are at various stages in the process, either going through training or backgrounding. I can double-check with them to make sure that's still the case, but that was the last I had heard.
Any other questions regarding 911? Okay.
The next fund is a 911 surcharge. Again, this is governed by the master plan, and only certain expenses are allowed. Total resources of 534,606. Total uses 533,017. Projected ending in fund balance of 787,000.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the significant changes are the transfer of software that I've previously mentioned. There is some movement between GL accounts. We consolidated the telephone expense item into a single telephone communications versus pagers and telephone and cellphones. So you'll see that moving and then increasing slightly. So there's about a $20,000 increase over base for telephones in total.
Questions? Okay. That completes the 911 surcharge, right? And then the next process is senior services? And are we going to listen to that today? Or are we going to go, is that for tomorrow with Mr. Morgan?
I'm assuming it will be part of Director Morgan's presentation tomorrow. This fund does house the DART programs as well as Homemaker and the food programs for seniors, primarily grant-funded. So typically don't see a lot of movement. Total resources 3.6, almost 3.7, total uses 3.7. So very-
Yes, my point was, my point was, I think we'd like to take like a 10-minute break here between-
Then we can come back and we'll be done with this part, and we can just go over the supplementals for special revenue funds.
Yeah. Why don't we take a 10-minute break now, and then we come back and you can deliver this, and then we'll go to that. Okay. Taking a 10-minute recess.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
And so, as I understand it, we're now going to, under tab, what, tab four, to the special revenue funds, is that where we're headed? Okay. And these are supplemental requests, then? Right, okay. Please proceed. Now that we've found out about our blackjack fees.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, for those following along online, we are on the supplemental agenda posting for today's meeting on page 325. So, there are four supplemental requests related to special revenue funds that we will cover today. The library and room tax requests will be deferred until tomorrow. And the two personnel-related requests for senior services were the homemaker and dart drivers, and we covered those under general fund transfers. So, the first request is for the leap excision machine, which is detailed on, I should have got the right page, page 12 of 15 of the supplemental, special revenue supplemental packet. This request is for $10,000 for the community health clinic, related to a machine that can help in the treatment of precancer of the cervix. It is a-
I'm sorry, I think we're not all on the same page here yet, so let's stop for a minute to make sure that we're all together on that. Are we looking at supplemental requests for the room tax fund? No.
Supplemental requests for special revenue funds. Room tax is a special revenue fund, but that will be covered tomorrow. So, in your binder, there's a green separator tab where the supplemental requests section begins. If you scroll or fast-forward about 10 pages through that, actually, we're on page 12 of 15.
That's not in this.
So, in the 11 by 17 format, we did the general fund yesterday, so we've covered that. There's a page for the library fund and a pa- and, I believe, two pages for the room tax fund, so we're not looking at those. But there is an 11 by 17 format page that starts with social services, 216-551, peer support specialist.
Yes, okay.
And for those following along online, that's supplemental agenda packet, page 404. That request for the peer support specialist was removed prior to submittal of the tentative budget, so it does not appear in your packet, along with the community services, Cale Recreation Leader and Maintenance Assistant, that are indicated as base budget, and China Spring grant-funded positions. Also, we're not in the supplemental packet.
We're in item one, senior services, homemaker.
Those two items, the senior services, homemaker and dart drivers, were covered yesterday in the general fund presentation, because they're funded by a transfer from the general fund. So, we're on request number three for community health.
For the electrical extension machine?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on that page.
And the detail of that-
Are we, I want to make sure all commissioners are on the same page here. Okay, Commissioner Noah Sad, you on this? Okay, good. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, so, okay, now I'm good, thank you.
And Ms. Willoughby is projecting that the detail request that is on page 12 of 15 of that same section of your binder up on the screen.
All right, so I see 100, sort of, towards the bottom on the right, 110 to 200 per procedure is reimbursable by Medicaid. So, how much does each, what percent would that be of the cost? Do you have any idea approximately?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, I believe we could have that information incorporated into the presentation tomorrow. I don't have that specific information provided here in the supplemental request, and I'm not familiar with those costs.
I'm in favor of it, anyway. It's a relatively low cost item, and I think it could do some good.
If you use the minimum amount, I'll round it up to 100, you have 100 patients who'll pay it off.
And I concur with Commissioner Hale, so this is, anytime we can offer this type of service to our residents, that's good. Okay, so, yeah. I take it we're all in concurrence with that one?
All right. The next, oh, really? The next request is from the road operating fund for some road repairs over and above typical road maintenance due to the extreme weather that we've had recently. And I would point out, this would be a request in Fund 232, the road operating fund, which is different from Fund 236, Tahoe Transportation, where we have a supplemental request coming up next, and also different from Fund 430, which is regional transportation. So, there's three different funds where there is potential road projects.
I know when I talked to Mr. Herb about some cracks, I suppose, in county roads due to the process of contraction and expansion through the seasons, he indicated that there was potentially a new material that they were going to be able to use that would help reduce that process. So, I'm anxious to, I'm anxious to see how that, if that's the case, how it withholds up to the, up to the weather conditions that we're experiencing, so. But I know this is throughout the county, that we really need help on this. Commissioner Noah Sad?
Well, number one, I think that $750,000 doesn't qualify as a small project, but I understand it's going to be quite extensive. You said there was going to be a sealant or something like that that'll prevent the cracks in the future? Is that what you said?
I hate to say prevent. As you go through the, you know, I know we've had significant issues for a number of years in the Trichester community. You talk to Eric Nielsen, the town manager down there, he talks about the Trichester cracks. And that has happened from basically the center of the roads, where they have maybe infrastructure underneath, the water lines or sewer lines, whatever. I know I've watched that, experienced that also. It's like, it's almost worse than speed bumps, honestly, because you take a dip in and come back out through the Saratoga Springs area of our community, and there's another other number of other, I don't know how, what you're experiencing up in the Sunridge area, probably maybe the same experience. But as those particular functions go through weather, whether that be extreme heat or extreme cold, those cracks expand and contract, expand and contract. Apparently, there's some new material that they can actually fill in that, that will at least not allow that to have such a significant impact in the future.
Speaking from the Sunridge point of view, I've driven over those cracks with a very stiff suspension, and yes, it does feel like a speed bump. But I've watched the maintenance folks pour tar into those cracks, and I swear, there are little buggers down there swallowing that tar up.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is make sure we get rid of the buggers, right? Yeah, I'm anxious to see how this works, I really am. I'm hoping that's what the process here is.
Terry Willoughby, I am as well. If you're a runner and you happen to stumble into those little cracks, it's not a whole lot of fun.
Absolutely.
No.
Okay. Good with this? Okay.
When does the public get to ask a question about that? At the end?
Basically, it would be at the end, Ms. Smallwood, but do you, I would, huh? Closing comments? Yeah, I think, you know, it's relevant right now, if you want to share with us some thoughts. I don't, Mr. District Attorney, is that good? Okay. Since we're not going to witness a huge-
Thank you, thank you for, is it on? Thank you for the courtesy, Barbara Smallwood, Town of Gardinerville, I live in the town. I just was looking at the supplemental requests, and I know yesterday we talked about it. So, it says an ongoing $750,000. That's three-quarters of a million dollars. And it says ongoing on the sheet you have. So, does that mean that in perpetuity now, from budgeting, we're going to have a supplemental request of $750,000 to that where we don't have that?
Terry Willoughby-
Those of us in Menon and Gardinerville and the grids take care of our own roads. And, anyway, that's my question, thank you.
And Terry Willoughby, we'll clarify, but I do believe this is a one-time request, and the form just perhaps was filled out in error. We have not talked about ongoing $750,000.
I appreciate the observation, Noah, so thank you. On to the next one?
Well, let me ask, because that makes me ask the question of, would this just be used on county maintained roads? Or would some of this be shared with some of those entities to whom we take care, you know, hold their money?
Terry Willoughby, no, that money, we don't hold any other entities' money, we collect it and pass it through.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, so we don't hold their money, and those are their roads to maintain. We would maintain roads that have been accepted by Douglas County and are maintained, owned by Douglas County.
And we would expect those other entities to do their own extra funding of road repairs for snow, if they choose to do so?
That's correct. And there may be some money through the FEMA storm relief for road repairs as well, if it can be directly tied to, but that's a big if, and I'm not going to speak for FEMA, but it's a possibility.
Okay, but I would imagine that if this new technology, hopefully, and that's what this is talking about, that I visited with John Herb about several months ago, if that's the case, then, you know, it certainly would be advantageous to the county and the residents to share that technology with the other entities in the, you know, the GIDs, the towns and others, right?
I'd like to hear about that tomorrow, if we could.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cates?
I don't, we may not be talking about the same things, but in my conversations with John Herb in the past, I've had similar conversations with him, and I could be wrong on this, we need to clarify this, John Herb, but my understanding is, it's not so much that there's a new technology to fix the cracks, but that the batch, the formula they used to use for batches when they built a lot of these roads is prone to cracking. And the new formulas that they use for asphalt is less prone to that. So, what I've heard him talk about is not necessarily some special technology to fix the cracks, but just that the way they do the batches now is a lot more resistant to cracking. But we can certainly clarify that with John Herb.
And you're probably right, I may have misunderstood, you know, misstated the process, okay?
Or I might misunderstand.
Yeah. I'm certainly hopeful that we can find somewhat of a permanent solution to this, though, right? I mean, you know, that would certainly benefit all of us.
For sure. This does bring up the interesting question, though, that this would come from general fund. No? This would, oh, special revenue.
Right, road operating fund.
But the source would originally be countywide taxes, not specific to the areas where the county maintains roads.
Where's the revenue source, in other words, right? Where's the revenue source? And I don't believe the revenue source is out of the general fund, it's out of special revenue funds-
Correct.
-that are generated through road taxes and-
Gas taxes.
Gas taxes and things of that nature.
And I'm trying to get John in for tomorrow's meeting, so he'll be able to answer more of these questions. Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the revenue is what we covered in this, today's presentation, in the budget worksheets, where we noted that the room tax and gas tax was increasing over the base budget. That's the funding source in Fund 232. So, a portion of room taxes and gas taxes is collected in this fund, and then, in turn, used to pay for road maintenance. And that was the fund that had the agreement with Carson City Work, Public Works for traffic lights, that, just kind of refreshing your memory on what we covered earlier.
It's just an interesting question to think about, revenues that come countywide, spent for county maintained roads that are in just certain locations. Just an interesting question or situation. Because I, am I right that the GIDs and the towns would collect their own taxes for road maintenance?
Yeah, they would get their own portion of gas tax, so we'll have John-
Oh, they get their own portion of gas tax? Okay, okay.
And you'll be hearing, that'll come through the final budget, when the town's budgets come through, so, but we'll have John, hopefully, we'll be able to hear tomorrow.
So, they get their own piece of the pie out of this same-
Yes.
-pie? Okay. Helpful. Thank you.
We get the whole pie, but then we have to distribute, we have to give other pieces, other pieces of that pie to the proper entities, right?
The state gets the pie, and they, we get a piece of the pie, they get a piece of the pie. The state distributes it all. Yeah.
Okay, we get a nibble.
There you go.
There was one other item here, though, under Terry Willoughby, I guess that's TW recommendation, that's Terry Willoughby recommendation here on this large sheet, and it says, "Consider Adding to the Base." So, what do you mean by that?
We didn't, well, at one point, it was, that was my comment of, like, we know there's a storm, we know that the roads are in bad condition, is does it really rise to the level of a supplemental request? But we did add it as, I was overruled, so. Logic prevailed, and it was added as a supplemental request because of the size.
Okay, but if we added, then that's, I guess that's a question I had in regards to supplementals versus adding to the base. If we add something to the base, then that seems to me like it becomes a part of the benchmark line process for the next year. Is that not true?
The actual expenses are the baseline, not the budget. We don't roll the budget from year to year. Jenny Cartwright, for the record, just to clarify, we do track those supplemental requests that are one-time versus ongoing in nature, and remove those from the next year's base budget before we turn it over to the department for their request.
Okay, that's, I've been asked that question, and I didn't have an answer, and I was going to ask it, but this gave me an opportunity to do that, so.
And that's the same way with revenue, when we do revenue projections for the next year. If we have some weird anomaly, like, oh, $8 million of federal grants that drop in our lap, we don't, we're not going to project that every year, we pull it out of the revenue.
Okay. So, are we good with going forward to the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I'll cover this. We had a request from Steve Tishara, you have a letter on the dais, and it's available in the packet, for ongoing funding for the microtransit program. And the caveat with this is, again, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean we would spend it. When I talked to Mr. Tishara, I explained the need for him to come back and provide a really detailed presentation on the program with ridership info and funding, how they're going to buy the buses, who's going to be riding the buses, and then we would enter in an agreement. So, again, just if you approve the funding, that does not mean, it would be contingent upon him coming back with a successful presentation and your approval of that contribution at that time.
So, as you know, I've been appointed to represent us on this board, and as, in that capacity, I've spoken with Mr. Tishara about making a request during the budget process. As I looked at last year, it seemed like there was considerable amount of frustration on everybody's part to have repeated requests. And so, it seemed to me like maybe a good idea to start earlier with the budgeting process and consider this, and also to get more detailed information. And you'll see on the back of that letter, there is a financial plan, and there is a service area that includes, as we made contingent on our contribution, more area in Douglas County. So, I, in, it was my understanding that as part of the budgeting process, we would also look at capital projects. And I thought, as part of this week, we would look at what other uses would there be for that 1.5 million? But as it turns out, that part of budgeting is not taking place during this week, although it was originally thought that it might. And it seems to me like, before a decision is made on how much to contribute to microtransit, we need to look at the other projects that are potential use of that 1.5, I think it's 1.5 in the TD TD budget, in that, it's in that approximate amount. And so, this, if John's going to be here tomorrow, he could speak to that maybe a little bit, too, but- speak to that maybe a little bit, too. But I was just looking to make this a better process for all involved by suggesting that some information be provided at this step of the budgeting process.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, and you could certainly defer any decision on this supplemental or any supplementals until after you've heard, at the time we bring the capital improvement plan forward, so that you have the whole picture.
It would seem to me at this point that we could budget for it, and then at a later time decide whether or not to actually fund it. So at this part of the process, I'm in favor of approving the request and then revisiting it at a later date.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, we want to see all those things that Ms. Willoughby mentioned, ridership, more numbers of all sorts to see how it's gone providing service in Douglas County. But it's, just would smooth the whole process if something were in the budget for it.
And Terry, Terry Willoughby, for the record, I did talk to Mr. Tishera about the need for kind of a long, long-term look at the project, and what the capital grants they're going to be looking at. And something like, if, what I explained is like, if you're going to go out and issue debt, you issue performance. That's the level of detail I would expect him to be providing to the board. Similar kind of financials.
Okay, so I'm going to wade in a little bit here on this. I still look at the, the Lake Link Service Area map, which is significantly deficient in, on our side of the state line for our contribution of 600, or $520,000. When I look at this financial sheet, page two of three, Lake Link Costs and Financial Projections, I see the 23 funding targets, and I, once again, I see the partner contributions, which means I believe those are private enterprises of 230, and then a city of South Lake Tahoe at 200, and then El Dorado County at 200, for a total of 630. We allocated just under, just over $100,000 less than that. Projected event center revenue dedication, dedicated to transportation of 351,000. Of course, that did not come to fruition for the 23-year, because they're not going to be open until July, what is it, 7th of '23?
6th.
6th or so, okay, so, July of '23, okay? So there's obviously no income for the 22, '23 budget in that process, from that process. What I'd really like to see is some projections of revenue sources, revenue coming out of the event center in the 20, I haven't seen, and I, and I don't know if you guys are working on this, Ms. Hales, regarding the 23, '24 budget for this, for this entity.
I think this is '24. This, this 351 is '24. Fiscal year.
Oh, okay. These are the targets, then, are for fiscal year '24?
That's my understanding.
And so, what you're telling me is that?
Or some, some are committed.
Okay, but some of the, so what you're telling me, there's projected event center revenue for the fiscal year '23, '24 from the ticket sales are $351,900?
Yes, projected to grow over time.
Chair, if I may add, if I, when I talked to Mr. Tishera about this, what my expectation would be to see at least a five-year financial plan going forward, not just one year. So if they came back, even if you put it in the budget, I think we should, the county should be able to see that information. That's reasonable.
Well, you know, and I appreciate what you're going with this, and I, and I agree with Ms. Willoughby in that regard. We annually bring into that fund 1% of the TOT tax, which is right at the number of 1.2 million. Is that, is that what we're projecting, our TOT tax, 1%, so we're looking at, well, 14%, okay, but 1% is dedicated to road projects and transportation, right?
Jenny can find that, the actual projection for next year for that fund.
I'm sorry I missed that.
Jenny will provide the actual projection for room tax revenues for that particular fund for next year.
Okay. So the money, in my mind, is going to be there, should we decide we want to continue with one-half of 1%. The money is going to be there. There's no, there's no question about that, right? I mean, we're going to have 1.2 million, or maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more on an annual basis. But I, I do like the, I think for transparency's sake, it's important for our residents to understand what, what the program's going to cost, and where all the revenue sources are going to be, and what the cost program is going to be. And then also the expansion of services, because this map still, you know, is supposed to take effect on April 15th, or if, on or about April 15th, no, later than I understand. But that still only gets us to Lake Village. It doesn't get into Round Hill, you know, and, and that area. So it still has a very, very limited amount of residential service to our, and we haven't seen any numbers yet because the service hasn't begun. We haven't seen any ridership numbers out of Douglas County, which I would really like to see. So while I don't necessarily mind putting something into the budget for funding to ensure that we, to give them a little bit of confidence also, right, that, that they can make sure that they dedicate the resources to make sure that this happens. Before we go too much into the '23, '24 budgeted year, I'd really like to see, you know, some first quarter '24, '23, '24 ridership numbers and things of that nature before we really, you know, jump into this thing whole hog. So.
Mr. Chairman, you talk about wanting ridership numbers. Are you talking the difference between Douglas County and California?
I'm talking about ridership numbers for the expanded service into Douglas County, because that's, that's what we bought. That's what we bought, right? That's what I, that's what I believe we bought for $520,000, is, is ridership numbers out of Douglas County.
Well, what we bought is, I mean, I think we bought a lot more than that, but we don't need to discuss that now. But I, I think this is, I appreciate your thought that putting a little in the budget would show good intentions to them. And so maybe we decide the amount later, but we just hold, hold that for now.
Is there, is there a suggestion on, it says one-time expenses to be, to be determined on this. So are you not looking for a number today, or?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, since we're on numbers, I just wanted to point out, you were $50,000 off. You were very close with your 1.2 million. The projected revenue in Fund 236 is 1.15 million from room tax. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a commercial number. And we have 1.5 million total projected revenue from room taxes in the Tahoe-Douglas Transportation District Fund for FY '24. So 1.5.
Okay, a little bit more than what I, so room taxes are going up. That's good, but, okay.
All right, I just want to know, what is the total outlay of money by both California and Douglas County for this microtransit? So they want to split it, right? 750 and 750?
No, their, their projection from, and we need to get you a sheet of this. I think it was out on the front table. There you go. Okay. So as I, the partnership, as I indicated, partnership, private and, and private, private contributions is 220, 230, City of South Lake Tahoe, 200,000, and El Dorado County, 200,000. So, I mean, what I'm seeing there is, is 630, but just a huge amount of real estate that they're covering versus Douglas County. Now, I understand a lot of our Douglas County employees are coming out of that area, okay? So there is a benefit there, and I, and I, and I do recognize that. But I'm concerned about the fact that the event center was supposed to pretty much, you know, in, in the projections of the event center, was pretty much, as I understood it during this process, to pretty much fully fund microtransit, okay? And I don't see that yet, okay? So, you know, and I understand it's just getting off the feet, off the, off the ground, so. But as, almost, it's almost like the, anyways, as those funds go up, certainly the contributions of, of private enterprise, and the counties, and the cities are going to, should decrease, right, in the, in the level, and it would be level off, okay? So I understand the need to, to get it going and make it sustainable, and something that people can count on, because that's, you know, an individual has to be able to count on something before they can do something. But, so that's where we need to, we need to hedge our bets on this one, that's all.
And I also want to know, what other opportunities do we have with this money? What other needs do we have with, to me, that's a major question. So maybe we hold, we'll, we'll have the capital projects discussion before the final budget.
Terry Willoughby, yes, because we have to roll the first year of the capital, whatever's approved as a capital improvement project, the first year of that funding rolls into the budget, so it'll be in the final. So we could have that. We could include this in this capital improvement plan discussion.
I think that's a good idea.
What do we want to do with this? What are you, what are you recommending?
My recommendation, Terry Willoughby, for the record, my recommendation is that no action be taken on this particular item today, but that finance bring it back as part of the capital improvement plan, and then it can be decided at that time based on the total available, total available resources, and then any contribution would be included in the final budget document.
Okay. At the same time, as I understand it, Mr. Ritchie, that this is, our inter-local agreement expires as of June 30th of 2023. So therefore, in order to go further with funding into the next year, we would have to have a new inter-local agreement. Is that right? And that would then specify also what we're, what we're anticipating as our, as our allocations to that, to that process.
Yes, Chairman. Doug Ritchie, for the record, that's correct. As I recall, the terms of the inter-local agreement expired the end of this fiscal year, June 30th of 2023.
Everybody on the same page here?
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay. And this is the last one? The, have we already discussed the, the DART buses?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, this is the last request for the special revenue fund supplementals that we plan to present today, and I'll turn it over to Terry to talk about this specific request. It's for the purchase of buses. Hasn't been covered before.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, so, DART buses are funded through grants, primarily from the Federal Transport, FTA. And sometimes there's a match of 20%, sometimes it's less. That will, when the grant award is received, this will be brought forward. We don't, we're not going to put this in the budget until the grant award is applied for, but it gives the department direction to go ahead and apply for the buses. So they're putting the, they're anticipating putting the matching funds in the budget, so that they have the match available for when they go to apply for the grant.
Okay, so we have the riders, we don't have the carts.
That's what it appears to be, yes. I'm not, I believe this is actually, is our, this says it will, having new buses as well as new drivers, which we have two requests for new drivers, will allow them to expand their existing services to include more rural and underserved areas of the county, such as North County, South County, and Topaz Ranch Estates.
So I see a note there from IRC. Is there ridership stats? Obviously, there's no ridership stats, because we have no, we know have no service. So you can't have riders if you don't have any service. And one of the critical elements here is, of course, having a service that the residents can count on, being at a place at a particular time and what, on a particular day. And so, we're certainly hopeful that this is going to be a beneficial service to South County. I'm, I'm going to be promoting it heavily as a commissioner, and I have a town hall, as a matter of fact, planned for next Wednesday night in Topaz Ranch Estates. And we're, we're going to hopefully mention that, give some kind of a teaser on this, that hopefully we're going to get this service started fairly soon, and, and just encourage the residents to please take advantage of it. If they don't take advantage of it, then, then, you know, shame on them, and, and, and we're, we're going to have to look at whether or not those resources were applied, applied correctly, right? But, you know, that's kind of, the onus is going to be on them to, to, to use that service. And that's always been a, a, a difficult task, so.
And Director Morgan, just for the group, good of the group, will be covering DART ridership information, based on the questions that were from yesterday's meeting, and as well as this. So he will be discussing this. And I think this particular request was actually revised after input from the IRC meeting to include this information about the additional routes, which is very helpful for the public and the board.
Okay.
I would say, I'm a proponent of public transport, as, in the amount that is feasible and common sense, to the extent we can do that. And yes, there should be ridership, but it will take a period of time for people to understand they can count on it and to build up ridership. So I, I'm in favor of this, and I think it's important for us to emphasize with the public that we would be getting $300,000 worth of motor vehicle for about the price of $60,000. And I think it's also important to emphasize with the public on the last item, is that is money that has to be spent for transportation at Lake Tahoe. And we can't spend it anywhere else or for any other purpose. And, and so within those confines, these things might make sense.
And I, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's been a difficult time, discussion, as we've, as we've had personal discussions about, of, when you, when you get calls from constituents asking why, why this and why not that, okay, and not understanding that, that there are restricted funds and have to be spent in particular areas. That's, that, you know, they don't want to listen to that, obviously. They just know that they don't have service. So I appreciate you bringing that, that, that point up, because that, that is important, and it illustrates our, where, where we have our hands tied in that regard. So anyways, I thank my fellow commissioners for, for looking, going down this road with me on this, and, and community services, because I think this is a tremendous benefit to our, to our elderly population, certainly in the county, and hopefully it'll have tremendous benefit in, in ridership, to the point where maybe we, you know, I think we're looking at one or two days a week, and, and hopefully we can expand that through ridership, right? So, thank you very much. So we're good with all this, right? What else, Ms. Willoughby, Ms. Cartwright?
Terry Willoughby, the remainder will be covered tomorrow. Room tax, library, we, we talked about China Spring. You're going to see a revised budget before final. So there's not not, so that's really it. Mr. Urb will be here tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. to talk all things roads. And we'll have Director Morgan here tomorrow for a presentation, and then the FTE discussion, also known as full-time employees. But we are done for today.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time and your indulgence with our questions, sometimes.
Always good questions.
So, very good then. We will go into then, I believe we're ready for, now, this was four possible actions, so we would need to allow, even though we're not going to take action, we will allow public comment on this item. And then we can go into public, closing public comment, is that right? So just to make sure we're all on the same page. And then we will be returning again tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in this site for continuation of the budget discussions, the tentative budget discussions. So at this time, is there any public comment on item number two of the agenda today? Don't everybody get up at once. Okay, then we'll close public comment on item two, and we'll go into closing public comment. Is there a closing public comment? Since a no public comment, closing public comment, we'll adjourn this meeting, and once again, we'll return.
Can I ask one question before we adjourn? I asked Ms. Willoughby about this on break, but I had a couple members of the public ask about why we didn't have the budget policies presented at the beginning of the budget hearings, because I think they're used to that. And she had a really great answer, and so I wanted to bring that question up again, so she could address it.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. Part of my wrap-up tomorrow would be talking about where we go from here and some of the policies we have, because the budget doesn't stop once it's adopted. It starts all over tomorrow. We do budget monitoring, but I'll talk about how the budget process plays out during the whole year. And some of those policies that were adopted previously, we've redone. And so you will see a room tax, special revenue fund balance policy. There's a general fund balance policy. We also have a budget augmentation and transfer policy, because there used to be almost like a second budget process that happened mid-year, where, and so we've encouraged, strongly encouraged through policy, to have people bring things only through the annual budget process as much as possible. So, for example, when we augment through adjusted opening fund balance, they are not to bring new capital projects, because we're bringing that usually in December or January. So surely, a new capital project typically can wait until the budget cycle. So we try and have everything done through the regular budget process as much as possible, so that the board has a very good strategic look at the whole picture, instead of taking one-off items.
So, so some of the budget policies are going to be revised in the coming year?
Yes, we talked about the enterprise fund, the best practice of setting appropriate working capital balances, and that will be brought back in the next year. Because, again, that takes some analysis. It's not a one-size-fits-all. You can't say all enterprise funds should be at this level. They all have different characteristics, different levels of stability, different revenue collection processes. So we need to take all of that into account, develop those processes. But so you'll be seeing some more policies come through in the next year.
Okay. I would like to say that the budget augmentation process always seems to be a confusing item for not only the public, but also for the commissioners. And perhaps maybe you can create an example of how that might work, so that we can make sure that the public understands how, and we get a better understanding of how a budget augmentation process works.
Sure. There's some, I will add the, the actual policy as supplemental material for tomorrow and then bring it up, because there are some good examples within that policy of how and how not to do things.
Okay. Well, once again, Ms. Willoughby, Ms. Cartwright, a stellar job, and our compliments. And we appreciate that, the process. So anyways, with that, and the closing public comment is done, so we'll adjourn the meeting until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow when we return. Thank you.